The purpose of putting in the legislation to direct Attorney General to create it is so that we'll follow.
Looking at the language. So that we know what the, what the trigger is for following it. That's key.
Trigger is you have a land use proposal.
Yeah.
You have to checklist and see what's relevant.
Who goes through the checklist?
Well, I would think staff would initially.
But the document says if a property owner is aggrieved, they have the right to ask for a staking review under the code, under the checklist. That's what it says. Well, but all I'm saying is, and I've asked this so many times, our staff reports each say there's no, there's no taking of private property with this action. Does that infer, does that, do we infer that the staff used the checklist on every single file? I asked out of Milton other time.
Well, yes.
Well, that needs to be clarified because.
Should that be our policy?
Yes, should that be our policy? And that would come out as, yes, where I'm going with those things. These are nice words in the document.
Yeah.
But do they lead to doing something? Do they lead to land use code? That would be the leading to a land use code if it said that following the Attorney General's guidance on, on takings would result in a file review, every file would be reviewed for potential taking. In order to make that statement, otherwise it's a groundless statement in my view. And maybe it doesn't even need to be made.
Well, no, I think that's actually, it is required if you make that statement.
Well, then let's find it in the code. Let's look at.
Well, that's, if you look at the second policy, it says shall confirm that the taking private property has not occurred. You do that in, it applies to that.
So.
Shall confirm that a taking private property has not occurred. So far, every file we've seen has that confirmation.
Right.
So that's after making, so if the staff hasn't actually used the checklist, then that's a problem.
Hey, that's where I was going.
Which is why we should say, shall follow. Anybody really have an objection to follow?
I don't think so. I think.
Is there an actual checklist, did you say?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then follow kind of, I, I mean, I liked it here because to me that sounds emphatic, but follow means a checklist. I don't like consider.
No, I have, I have to take and say. I think everybody got it. The sixty seven, eight thousand three says Attorney General shall establish by October ninety four, an orderly, consistent process, including a checklist, that better enables the state agency or local government to evaluate proposed regulatory administrative actions to assure that such actions do not result in an unconstitutional taking private property. As a basis of, and that's number one. So that, that imposes a condition on local government. Number two, sets it up to private property owner, if he, if they think that there is, they can, they can request a takings analysis. But if, if. Yeah. Well, I mean, I think, no, the way I would think this is going to be utilized. Proposal land use application. That somewhat borderline. For instance, if, if, if what you're doing is granting a, a right, like for instance. Law line judgment. That's probably not a taking if the applicant is. So, you know, I mean, there are certain things that, you know, just as a matter of common sense, you wouldn't have to go to the checklist and say, well, now he's asking for us to do this, right, in his own land. So that would seem to be pretty obvious. It's not taken. So.
So then, yeah, even there, that is the right word. So the way it was written, shall consider. It leaves it open a little bit for discretion, for that very discretion, I think.
Well, it doesn't mean you're not following it. It just means that by common sense, you realize that it's not implicated.
There's only five things on the checklist.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah. I mean, there's, well, there's a whole paragraph behind it to understand them, but there's only.
I'm trying to rack my brain. I know he's given an opinion on this in the past, still has. What it is, word for word, I'm not sure. Yeah. I think it's along the lines of there's no perceived takings in this, in the land use file, but it doesn't take away the right for the, the appellant or any landowner to apply for a takings analysis. I think that's been his opinion. So I just pulled up the checklist. It is only six questions long. So could we fill this out for every land use file and include it as part of the record? Sure. So is that something the commission wants us to do? And is that something the board wants us to do? We could add it to a part of our file review. It doesn't seem all that complex.
That's where I was headed. It is, there's only, I mean, there's a paragraph or three behind every item on the checklist, but there are only five of them. It's not like it's twenty items long. And I think we have, we ought to have a policy that for each land use action, we evaluate it in accordance with the Attorney General's checklist and ensure that it's, that doesn't, it's not a taking. And it'll be a policy. That's what we do for every language file. And I think we could come up with better words.
That would, that would be very, and that would transition right into Title twelve code language.
Right. Then we know, in the answer to your, then we would know the answer to the question you've raised in the past, that when we say that at the end of every motion, that we actually have gone through the checklist.
Really true.
Said, yeah.
Okay.
And since there's only five, it shouldn't be, you know, you guys will learn them, what they are. You have to read the paragraphs, but there's only five. It's not like.
It's not even that owners really, I recall.
It's pretty straightforward. Looking at.
All right. Okay, so.
So are we happy with follow?
Yes.
Okay.
Wow. That only took half an hour. I'm a good writer. Sometimes. Population. I'll have to go back to. Oh, said, but I had that multi-generational, the, the, the population had multi-generational, multi-economic urge. I, I took that a while. Read here, Bonner County shall assess the impact of demographic changes on land use proposals. At least I mean it, it sounded like it was land use.
Okay, how? Is it further explained in the objectives how to do it? But I'm not sure how. Yeah. This is, this is one that's, it's intrigued me since I first read the population section plan.
Well, the objective is Bonner County should implement that. Bonner County should keep current with the coming census data, population, those projections.
Yeah.
Shall use that data to analyze community needs, project.
So using the population data. Would then.
Then a policy to go on and say population projection shall be analyzed regularly to determine if, I think it's. Regularly to determine the public and community needs of that through land use decisions. Population forecast census data shall be used to evaluate housing and the needs for protection services. Bonner County shall cooperate with its incorporated services. That's, that was basically. I didn't change them. I did change, within the ACI, I added.
So population changes. Potentially, we're, for concern with increase and decrease. So it's applied, maybe it's not applied, but we, we infer that it's a increase. May affect services. May impact services. So. Since the county doesn't regulate any services.
The way that would come up is if you've got a proposal for. And there weren't, and you, they kind of recognized, if you recognize that there weren't services to support it. So what do we would prove it on?
Right.
Even though we don't, I don't say, you know, you're gonna, you sewer district are gonna do this, but you have to evaluate whether it's there.
I just don't see where a population forecast and census data has anything to do with that. It's a subdivision of sixty lots. It's gonna have sixty homes. It's gonna have two point four three people per household. That's the immediate forecast for that property. It's nothing to do with census or population.
Yeah, I mean, you got two point four people in sixty, they're gonna produce a certain amount of sewage.
Absolutely, but it doesn't come from population forecasts and census data. I'm saying, to put these words in there, they should, they should result in something. It would be, would it be more sensible to say? You know, of course, and actually the population section, the wording in the document now talks about those densities that came out of census. Census concluded there were four point, three point, whatever, people per household. Okay, we use that. And then we say, based on the fact that there, there's that, then we can apply that, that population density of a lot should be used in looking at new subdivisions to see whether or not that resultant number of residents in that subdivision is gonna tip the scale on services. I mean, make it real, make it. Well, I, yeah, it has to, number one, it has to be backed up with the text in.
Based, based on a resort.
Yeah.
We have no number for that unknown that we're dealing with. Those people.
But, and that's why, I mean, we're anxiously waiting for the census data to come out because they were supposed to when they, in these, all these Western communities that have so many vacation rentals now, that was supposed to be one of the topics in the census data. To get a feel for that. I, we haven't seen the data yet. They're still producing it and they keep pledging next month, next month, next month.
Well, for years, our hard data population's been forty plus minus.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to just. Time is close with tourist and everything else.
Yep.
Go to one hundred and twenty, thirty five thousand. My, my, my point is, my point is.
What number?
We design, we design around fifty thousand, find out here every morning it doesn't work.
So.
Well, it works eight months out of the year.
Yeah, it works eight months out of the year.
Two thirds of the time it's working.
So even, but therefore the text in the population.
Nine months.
Should divulge that, should talk about.
It should.
Yeah. It should and come up to some conclusion, therefore, and then an objective would be using population data from the census. Plan for, and just that, in the rural area. Whatever the number is, two point six five people per household or something.
So.
No, you wouldn't put that, you wouldn't put that in.
No, it's, you don't, you don't want. Yeah, it's too, it's too hard, but just stating, it's, it's a, it's a dynamic because it's gonna change.
But I, I would argue that this, the census data is good and it gives a broad perspective. But if you really want to put your finger on the heartbeat, it's about what's going through the door of the planning department. Looking at, it, it, you know, the permits for those vacation rentals, it's for the permits for building houses. It's, I mean, we have a lot of information right here. And while the census is getting a broader scope, if we really want to drill down and have, you know, right now, information, how do we, how do we extract that? Cause I know it's there. And it would get, it would answer some of these questions that you're asking.
Well, let's say, sure, we, we drilled down and we found out, you know, here's our static population, here's our increased summer population. Where does that lead in a land use regulation?
So what I'm wondering, I'm sitting here thinking, if the focus here in the population section shouldn't be that we have a policy that on some regular basis, I don't know if it's annually, maybe too, too short of a time period, but on some regular basis, we evaluate current population and population forecasts, including things like how many people are only here seasonally and so forth. And then based on that, review our land use policies in general across the board and see if there are other policies in the comp plan that need to be updated to accommodate the changing forecasts and population.
Right. And one of those components of that, pieces of that, use a different word. The code now says you can have a, a single family residence, an A D U, and two permanent homeless house people on your property. What has that done? Has that resulted in a, a? A, a threefold increase in the population in the county because of that? How many lots, how many parcels have taken advantage of that provision, those provisions?
So I mean, I agree with, with Josh, that's, that's data that you could get out of the.
Yeah.
Planning department, you could see how many people have applied for those permits.
Permits and files.
And that would be useful information to understand. On some regular basis, I think we ought to review it and say, okay, what does all that mean? And do we need to make some other changes at the comp plan or in the code? Given the changes we've seen in the last two years or five years, or whatever that time interval is, where we wanna go, so reevaluate that stuff.
So the, the goals and objective is to keep current with known data. As to population density in all areas of unincorporated county.
But more so than that to me, and use it.
Right, and so that's the goal.
Don't just collect the data.
Or even the statement in the goal, and, and, and have that be reflected in. Land use code, I'm, what I'm stumbling with, okay, we get that far, what? Moratoriums?
Well, I don't know, it, it depends on what the data shows you, right?
Or what the data does. Be, should that be the basis then to say, okay, now when we get down to the land use map. In order to not have overrunning density, overrunning population. This area must be five acres and one drawing, you know, per five acre, kinda like what, what Sagal said. Must be, no exception. In order. You're not gonna have this, this part of the. You're not gonna have a formula. That says, X is Y and Z is this.
Right, so how do, how do we, how do we set that up?
I think you say by, by a general statement, that's why. Our population projections should be analyzed regularly to determine if public and community needs are being met through land use decisions. Sounds like that's to be encompassed.
The idea, listening to this discussion, when I look at that, the goal, how Alan wrote it. To me, that takes into account the fluctuations you're talking about. Bonner County shall assess the impact of demographic changes.
Okay, cause it says on land use proposals, that means the stuff that comes at the door. Not just the general population out there, is what comes through the door.
Right.
For land use.
But that's how this is gonna be applied, is on what comes through the door. Not on what's out there already. I mean, really, this.
It's.
This document is mainly for what comes through the door. Am I not understanding?
It is, but to me, there's no follow through, right? If I read that statement quite literally, it says, we're gonna, we're gonna determine. If the public and the community needs are being met through land use decisions. No, they're not. Okay, we're done, we did it.
Yeah, right.
We, we need to follow through to what changes and policies do we need to take?
Okay, so is.
So that they are, if they're not.
Well, okay, so the goal, go further and say, and adjust, adjust things accordingly.
Yeah, you have to change policies in the code plan and the code.
So what if everything outside of this particular city is running fine, however.
That point.
Their. Their objectives are not the same with the county. Moving traffic.
I'm not sure is the, I, I mean, that's a, that's a legitimate issue. That's a legitimate issue that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure how that. I'm not sure if that would fall into this section, or maybe that's in the transportation section, or.
Obviously, it obviously affects because. Traffic is generated from the unincorporated county that comes into the city.
Yeah.
So it's obviously, it's obviously.
Get out and look at the traffic in the morning. See what's happening and where the stumbling areas are.
Three roads into town. That's it.
Well, I think that's why.
When we hit the traffic.
I think, I think that's why in the original implementation policy, even in the one that I changed a little bit. Why that third policy is in there, that's why our county should cooperate with its incorporated cities and major community counties. To address growth challenges within the A C I areas, coordinate planning efforts wherever possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's good.
And see, I, the, under the first policy, population projections shall be analyzed regularly to determine. To me, that answers, Don, the, the question you have with the goal.
To, it just takes it one step further.
Generic or, I, I mean, to me, that, that pretty much tells you how you're gonna do it.
I don't think. You wanna stay on top of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
That's, that's a single item.
Yeah.
But, you know, traffic is a single data point. People looking for something that's.
Yeah, I mean, all of, like I said, if services are being impacted, all the services provided for people to live on the land. They all need to be looked at to make sure that none of them's gonna tip over because of increased population.
So would you be happier if it said in the first policy, public and community services?
I think definitely.
No, because when you've got people that are off-grid or providing their own services.
I think public and community needs encompasses all of public services. I would, that's the way I would interpret.
Not specific to public utilities.
Yeah, it's everything. It's all kinds of needs.
That includes roads, schools, everything, everything that's provided, everything that the landowner doesn't provide themselves, they use some public facility.
Absolutely.
So.
I would just prefer that the outcome be that we revisit policies in the comp plan. Cause, because changing, you don't just change land use decisions. We had this discussion with. K B C R's proposed change. You'd have to have a change in the comp plan and/or a change in the code to drive changes in land use decisions. So I think the operative, the operative phrase there should be, based on the analysis of. Of population and what that means in terms of whether public and community needs are being met. We will review the comp plan policies overall and perhaps code. To ensure that we continue to meet the community's needs to relay these decisions. But it's the policies and, and potentially the code that has to change to drive that.
Right.
Yeah, policies are all in the comp plan, so policies, comp plan in general.
So then maybe we should change that first one. Population projections, or maybe we should make it broader than that. This is the population section, so. Yeah, okay, population projections shall be analyzed regularly. Okay, so what we've talked about too is, you know, population projection, that, that implies coming out of census or some. Some think tank like that, that this is where it's going, which is right, but if we bring it down to. Like we said, what comes in the door. That's our, that's our.
Yeah, we.
Theory of operations.
Should include that too.
Door, so it's the numbers that we're seeing. Again, that's not necessarily population. Although you can make a projection based upon what. I think, I think what Dave Davis is getting at is, is good, so analyze regularly to. Terminal changes need to be made to the comp plan.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
That would, that would take the goal one step further to. Find some, but what I'm doing is other policies. I know, well, policies, should policies be in line with the goal, or, or further. Well, I think they are. Emphasize what a goal is gonna do. How you would accomplish, policies and objectives accomplish goals. Yeah, I'm not sure what the different goal and objective is. I know, I know. Well, I think we can put it in the policy that says, and I would just add in there regularly to determine if. Changes to the comprehensive plan. And, okay, so on our county revised code. Make sure that community, oh, public and community needs. Yeah, existing. Right, changes need to be made.
Yeah, and I think you can leave that last sentence or last phrase crossed out to say to ensure the public and community needs. Continue to be met or through, through land use decisions or some words like that.
I think the comprehensive plan, part of goals and policies. I'd say the existing comprehensive plan, goals and policies.
Yeah, that's the only place that goals and policies exist is in the comp plan. So, all right, either way.
It's just less words, it's clearer, it's not.
Less word. Say after, after the zoning code, I think you're gonna say. Or ordinance to ensure that public and community needs are being met through land use. Think I'll just try it now. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, any other changes to population?
So the only thing, and I don't know, maybe it needs to be in a, in a separate statement, but I think Josh's point was good. It's not just population projections that we have from data. It have, have this data to use. We have a lot of data that we can mine out of the planning department. Through, you know, building location permits and how many permits, how many people have come and asked for one of those R V pad hookups on their property? Or A D Us or all that stuff.
I think that comes under a different, different category.
Well, I think it's population then.
I don't think so. The thing is, we could translate it to population.
Yeah.
If we use that number that.
It'll be nice to know what the numbers are for transit.
I mean, Alan's an interesting, Alan's raised an interesting point, though. Does it belong here in population or does it belong somewhere else? Yeah, that's, that's fair.
It's just like we need to know how many federal, state and private camps. That's recreation, that's put in the population here.
So Brian, what are you doing this summer? You wanna get out there and knock on trailer doors and?
No, you go to, you go to county parks.
Hi, where are you from?
You have adequate.
I'll drive you around. Oh, yeah.
But if you try to make it and put up, make a reservation.
Mud hole is one quarter.
They're not full up in threes right now.
Probably because it's underwater.
Oh, no. So, are we doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to what, school facilities?
Okay, so school. I just. Many, many months ago, I copied out everything out of the code, out of the. Plopped it down documents, I started adding. Questions and statements, as you see here in the, well, it does show up very well here, but it's different colored text, and I tried to date them all. So the latest set of comments came from May sixteen. Oh, now this one, there's a lot of goals in here. Oh, they're not even stated as goals, objectives and policies. Bonner County should execute land use policies and ordinances that allow technology advances to benefit schools. Nothing to do with land use. Does it? Unless it was to allow a tech building to go in somewhere, some, you know, a K tech or B tech. Bonner Technical Education School, like in, like in Cooney County they did. But that could go anyway. I don't, I don't see that that's, that's not a lady who's going. So the second one. The county should involve school districts and proactive reviews of development applications to determine particular school needs and concerns. Development should encourage to cluster to reduce impacts on schools. Two very, very different things, but the first sentence, we do that, that's already part of the review process. We ask the schools for. Input on various developments. To take that home a little bit further. In discussing it with, at this point, the East Bonner County School District. They pretty much said. It doesn't look like we would ever make a comment that this development is going to tip over the school system. So.
Why, why is that?
Because incremental. And the fact that even right now, school districts are not included in the state code that could collect impact fees. Because of the way the schools are funded, by state and federal money. It's a dedicated fund and so forth, but they, so they've already said, no, no, you're not gonna, you're never gonna see. Don't approve that development because it's gonna tip us over. So. Do we just keep doing that to get that same comment? I, I don't know, I mean, it, it kinda leaves me like, oh, so what? Now what? Well, I think that's where, that's where. Evaluation needs to be made, not a bit on that specific level. But. All right, so that is where. And most of us have asked, okay, you folks who did this back in two thousand two, three, four, leading up to the adoption of five. Were there analyses of school facilities, if, if this area that we're gonna say is R five, R ten, Ag twenty? If that was developed X percent, what would that do to the schools? Well, you know, isn't, isn't the, can't, can't we just put the honest back on the school? Rather than say, is, is this adding this house or this ten houses, is that gonna push you over the edge? Say, what is your capacity? How many, how many, how many more students can you handle?
And a couple files back, school district said they would add a portable, the portables that.
So it's unlimited.
So it's unlimited, so it's.
Unlimited. And that's the way they've handled it historically. We have more, it's something because again, they have. They have the funding to do that stuff.
And I was in public hearing.
And, and yet, oh, the, the folks in Sally Valley will constantly, they're all, they've all got kids there in the school, in the north side school. The old building is falling apart. Oh, Clark Fork went through it a couple years ago. Washington schools falling apart. Clark Fork junior, senior is old building. They keep, they keep working on it, you know, diligently, and someday, some major component's gonna fail. And they'll have to figure out how to pay for it, but it's not because six new houses. I mean, it seems to me, all the county, all the county could do is say. How many more students can you have? Will we, unlimited, cause we can have portions? Okay, that's no longer a land use consideration. So.
It is, that's a consideration for the school.
No, I, I, I don't think we'd ever get anywhere if we said there is no resultant land use action. That we're code is gonna come from this component, so we won't have a component in our comp plan.
I didn't say that.
No, but it's supposed to be, these are operative components. So that things are done, land use code wise. Okay, so county should involve the school districts and the proactive review of development applications, maybe that's too narrow. Involve, uh, the school districts. Well, they do. Every school, every school has a plan, every school district, the two school districts, the county and the other schools. Have a forward-looking plan. Here's what we, you know, they, they go through projections every year. Our facilities, they got facilities plans, they got, that's where the levies come from. All this, that they have to put out to support. Anyway, the second sentence there. Development should be encouraged to cluster to reduce the impact on schools and transportation costs and needs. Yikes, wow. That's quite a, quite an objective.
Yeah.
And clustering has never been. Hardly ever, if ever, been the rave thing to do in this county. People, developers just don't go for it. I.
Most people are not coming this direction so they can live next to another house.
Well, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it needs the objective, it's almost counterproductive.
Yeah. Cause in the code, there is a, there is an element called clustered housing, any place in the county. Sentence out. Yeah, I, I don't know that it's. So we take out the first point, we take out the second sentence of the second. So what's next? All right, so the third one there, Bonner County land use decisions and ordinances should not adversely impact local schools, the same argument as before. And the transportation system. Now flipping over to transportation systems, because that's also part of the whole component here. That was one place where talking with the transportation sections of both. East and West Bonner County school districts, they said, oh yeah, we got lots of issues. County roads, they're, one of the biggest issues that they hear from the parents is. Why don't you come up a road with your bus? We'll provide a turnaround, it's a private road, we're not gonna go there. So that means that the. So, that means that the parents take their kids either down to the public road, or they're going to the town anyway, they just drop by the school and drop the kids off. And some, somebody picks them up at two thirty, three, whatever, and takes them home. That's. I, I don't know how to crack that nut. What brought this to mind, one afternoon, I left town here at about three o'clock and I hit the, the parent trap. I call it, on Sagel Road, three quarters of the way back to the highway, they were stacked on the bike path that is specifically there for kids to ride their bike home. Totally taking up the bike path, forcing the kids to ride in the street. Those that do. Yeah, Cooney, and I think the same problem occurs out of Northside. Yeah, so, what does that say that? I, I don't know what this is.
Perhaps, perhaps when we, when those letters come out, goes to the school district, maybe one needs to go to the transportation.
Well, it's, or we just talk to, we talk to the, yeah, we talk to the school districts and make sure that they do. You know, because it, it, it's all one district. It's just, it's a division or section of the district.
Isn't the, isn't the, maybe the fourth point here. Eliminates the need for the third point. If roads, trails and bike paths point you're talking about?
Yeah, roads, trails, bike, bike paths should be designed and maintained without pass safe passages to students. Yeah, I mean, that's a grand statement. That, but then that sets it up so that we could put in road standards that require that. Road standards that, and I, I don't know why. Well, I can, I can figure out why the school district decided not to trace up any private road.
The light.
It's a private road. Yeah, liability. What if?
So. What about a public road privately maintained?
Well, see, they don't. The reason, the reason, oh, Alan is the bus gets stopped, they are bringing county patrol truck up here in the private road.
Yeah, it just complicates, complicates, so they stick.
Here in the road, and then they gotta rebuild the road, so it's not.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
So, but, but will they, will they not go up a public road that's privately maintained? Because I know the county is approving development with lots of time, all the time.
If it's a bus route and the bus gets stopped, it's on the county.
If you look at, each district has a map and it says, here's the roads that we said.
Unless it's, unless it's a public road, publicly maintained.
They will not ever go. So, that, so, you know, I've challenged the school district. You look at the high school over here, that parking lot is chock full to overflowing every year, every year. It's the nature of life. True enough, true enough. Who had a car in high school?
I've got two, I've got, I've got two kids with cars. I never had, I never had a car in high school, but, but because of where we live and getting kids back and forth, that's just the nature of the beast.
Time, you and your wife don't have time to cart kids around anymore.
Yeah.
I mean, come on.
I would think that, maybe not, but.
Do we?
Where I from? If, when, when the kids, was it when you're sophomore or junior that you turned sixteen?
Sophomore.
Sophomore. After so, so long of the sophomore year, all of a sudden, the parking lot's full because that kid's got a license. And he bought a car.
That's true.
I mean, it seems to me, I, I. The higher the high school is. Yeah. So, anyway, it's a.
I think, I think the point about roads, trails and bike paths being designed to maintain, to allow safe passage to students is fine. I would wonder. Would, would all of us naturally include provisions for, for dealing with school bus traffic in that? Or do we need to specifically call that out? And I, and I wonder if we need a policy that says, you know, new. I, I'm not sure how, how this would work, but some policy that talks about ensuring that, you know, there are places for school buses to turn around at the dead end streets and so on and so forth. So that school buses can, you can get out.
And I, I, I think that's already taken care of by road bridge. Because the district talked with road bridge.
So, shouldn't it be in here, though, as a policy?
But it's, it's not, it's not leading to a land use policy.
Well, it sure is. It's a requirement that you would impose, for instance, on a new subdivision, perhaps.
Well, okay, but, I mean, on a, on an adjacent county road?
Maybe. Maybe on the, on the county road that is the entrance into a subdivision?
Yeah, I mean.
Make sure at least you can accommodate a school bus stop there. I, I don't have any specific examples, but.
The county already imposes.
Give me a road.
Well, but they did, right? When they built the, I don't know, I don't know what's down there yet. We'll figure that out, but there is a big circle at the end of the road where the school bus turns around.
They were supposed to do it, right?
On the trails tied into this, this, this deal here. Because it's bike paths and walking trails are two different ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the, the whole thing, the reason trails was put in. That was a big issue back in two thousand five to two thousand eight, really, and the county staff pushed it really hard. And Trails Committee was formed and everything, a lot of discussions, it got a lot of rebuff from the rural residents. Oh, we don't want trails in our. But it was still put in there as a good idea, and it ended up very much put in this section because of it. But how many subdivisions, how many subdivisions of any size have had an internal walking system to get kids to a central point? Very few if any.
Or take out trails.
In, in plan to do.
Yeah, PUDs do allow for it. They allow for it. I can't think of any that have had it. Other than common areas, common areas and then eventually residents end up putting trails in those.
They give density bonuses for trails, especially if they're allowed for public access.
So, we're, we're gonna, um, is. A lot of these trails that are paved, that are walking paths, not meet ADA standards.
No, and that's, that's someday, or this, is this someday, how do you think this?
The state doesn't, has not accepted the federal standards. Oh, really? At that point in time, it never does.
Oh, boy.
It, it's gonna be a disaster, so.
Because if you can't be achieved, this might can't be achieved, raids alone.
Oh, how, how does, how does having trails in here one way or the other?
ADA. Eh, it's a, it's a crack in the door. Somebody could claim.
It's just the county saying, you gotta have those trails.
All right. All right, so, so the county requires the developer to put in a pathway, puts it in. Somebody gets out there in their wheelchair and says, this is not ADA compliant. I'm suing the county, you, you're proven, you're told to do it. Right, for there. All of a sudden, ADA is applied to.
But, you know, you could apply that, you could apply that to all, all sorts of.
Well, talk with, talk with the city attorney who retired two years ago about ADA sampling.
Okay, so, so, there's, there's, there's something wanting to be dedicated over to another.
Yeah, that's another, let's, let's talk about that one later.
An, another owner, and they say, no, we will take it over, but you still resume, assume responsibility for any ADA issues.
So, this, I think this, that. Bullet point, it, it needs a lot of review. Like I said, well, the one that I asked all the questions after road standards for ensuring access, population forecast, how do they, how do they factor into this incremental school enrollment per household is sketchy? So, you know, all these things are.
My suggestion was, you take that bullet point out. Maybe take out trails.
Yeah, okay.
Um, did we, did we, the cluster, clustering of housing, did we?
Next step.
Because I was just gonna say, in the housing section, under policies, one of the policies.
You could, you could say something there, if that trail is certified to be a safe routes to school trail or something like that, that'll work.
Because there was, that was, our, would put that in there, too, because at the time, it was a subdivision done just outside Cooney. Trail down to it. And they were required to put a trail through their subdivision to that city owned property. Down to the elementary. And that was part of it.
Yeah, the trail goes through the.
Tansy Field.
Can I jump in here?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, we were talking about the clustering, and I was gonna say, in the housing, the, that I was looking at, one of the policies is clustering of housing. Clustering of housing to save on infrastructure and transportation cost is encouraged. So, if we nix it there, then we'll have to readdress.
It, it needs to be in the housing section.
So, it is there, okay.
I, I, I believe it is.
No, I, I just read it.
Okay.
That's where it was.
And that's from the current?
That, that's current, yeah. Okay. Just wondering if, if the one offsets the other.
No, it's not, so, I think, you know.
It's more, more appropriate there.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. Yeah, this last bullet, long term consequences, maybe. Should be.
Finish four.
Four.
One, two, three, four.
That's the Bonner County Roads and Trails.
Yeah, I mean. That has suggestions on trail.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, yeah, no. Maybe park it at this point, it, it needs.
So, we'll take out three, leave, leave four as it is, yeah. But just put a note, Swati, if you put a note after you just. Has the state really, or we're not accepted ADA?
On the one that says trails.
Has the state, has the state really not accepted federal ADA?
Oh, no, yes, they have. There is a, there is a.
They have, okay.
You walk around town in any facility and.
All right.
There's a lot of.
What's it called, the plans?
When it happens.
State has to come up with a plan to. ADA.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
It's a specific thing that, that.
Three?
Yeah, okay.
I know if you violate, if you violate ADA, it's not a state issue, let's say.
It's a federal issue.
It's a federal issue.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah, retrofitting.
Hey, Swati, Swati has a question.
Well, I, I know, but I'm talking about.
True, if it's federal money, it has to, if it's private money, no. It is, it's strong suggestions under the America's Disability Act.
Are we, are we nixing that whole section there, the whole ballpark?
I, yeah, it's, it's, it ends up being an inoperative. Uh, objective. And that one, the next, the one there that says Bonner County Roads, Trails, et cetera, I'd say park it and you can work on that more later. It's very, very complex, and it may just be. Subsumed into the road section.
Later. This last one is redundant.
Yes.
Transportation?
Possibly, yeah, let's just say transportation.
It was redundant.
Yeah, it is.
We're just taking out the last one.
And even that, like I said in my comment, that's what the analysis of this component is supposed to do, to determine the trend. So, it's, it's already there, but it's supposed to be up in the, this should be a conclusion from that analysis about trends. Therefore, we need to go this way for the next ten, twenty years. So, I, yeah, it's, it's redundant, but maybe a comment at the end of this one, just saying. Make sure the analysis comes to conclusion about the trend. What the code says. Okay. So, then we're in the action plan, the county should keep calm with data regarding school capacity and transportation, so forth, with all that. Okay, that's, again, that's part of the analysis that's required. Was supposed to be required in the text that came before this, so it just says, keep that going, I guess. But it doesn't, it not, not necessarily would it, would it end up in a land use regulation? But again, like I said, it's a solid principle to set in place, but where? It's supposed to be back in the text of the component as the analysis. So, I'm not sure what to do with that one. The next one. The county should examine impacts of land use proposals on school systems and should seek mitigation from developers to provide facilities, safety features and others permitted by Idaho code. Wow, again, you talk to the districts and they say, no, even, I specifically asked Andre School District, what about? Northside, one thing that they've stated over and over again is they have inadequate sized play fields. But would there be a land use regulation that would say, okay, you next door property owner developer, when you develop, you're gonna, you're gonna dedicate two acres to the school? Uh-uh.
Well, that, that is, that is what.
That's what it says.
That is what this.
That's what it implies. But it, so if somebody could prove.
In many areas, this would be a standard, I mean, because.
Not naming names, but let's say that.
Take care of their own problems.
Let's say that.
I don't know how that applies.
They proposed development in the area around that school.
Leave it at that. Could it be that their impact on the school system would be such that they, one, one mitigation measure, they could dedicate two acres of land to the school district or playground? Or public school, whatever, or, or, right, replace the school, something like that. And in giant developments like down in Canyon County and such, three thousand homes, they have school sites, they have fire station sites, they have church sites, they have grocery store sites. In the development. Because they, they needed, they would overstress everything around them if that just plowed down there, three thousand new homes came in next week.
But how does this, how does this apply?
So, I, right, so, I, I don't know, I mean, it's a grand.
I don't think it does at all. I mean, if you've got a site that big, you might as well throw in space for your own sewer district. I mean.
And they probably would.
Water and everything, so you're building a city at that scale.
Yeah, you'd get your own little town.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know, I mean, it, it's a nice goal, but is it?
Doesn't seem relative to this.
Yeah.
I think that it doesn't.
It's a good goal, but procedure, not, not a land use regulation in school policy.
Have you, have you, have you ever required that?
No. Because the school district has never told us, oh, wow, this is gonna tip us over, you can't allow this development unless it.
Unless you build a school.
Yeah.
Because, because they get paid by the student. So, the student population grows, they get more money, and they have a way to deal with it through temporary portables or whatever.
And again, they.
Or shifting students from one school to another.
They have to fight for it, but they have funding sources they can go to, to make that happen. So, I don't know, I, I, this whole school section, I questioned it from day one. It doesn't fit, maybe nineteen seventy-five, when they were still figuring out how to do schools in Idaho, hopefully. Maybe there was some achievable goal, but a lot of time and.
I think that this.
Water under the bridge has gone since nineteen seventy-five.
This goal. Seems really to be applicable to what Josh said, which is a major development.
Right. So, do we keep it just in case somebody scoops up forty thousand acres and?
As a matter of policy, would, uh. Is that something we want to be able to do?
It's almost like.
Developer comes in and says, I wanna build five thousand houses. Probably not gonna happen.
No.
But at that scale, I would say yes.
Yeah, scale, yeah. So, it would make sense.
So, let me paint a. Well, at that scale, a lot more is gonna happen.
Oh, it'd be, it'd be way more than just schools. One thing that I checked. The department has given us for yourself, how many acres?
Private process.
No, how many acres of large forest holdings, I forget what, what's the, over forty, that, that term? So, it's paper companies, John Hancock Investment Companies. Thousands and thousands of acres in Bonner County are held by that, let alone Forest Service and state lands. All those are investment parcels. If it's gonna make them more money for their investment to sell it, than to keep it, to timber, to whatever, just in their portfolio, wow. Because a lot of that land, if you look around the county where that stuff is, it is very desirable property. I looked the other day and I saw a place out in the east part of the county, it's in, in the hills and everything, but it's still accessible. Four sections in a row are John Hancock, that's three hundred, six hundred and forty times four. That's a lot of land, and you could have one well of a development up there in those hills.
So, let's keep it.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a insurance policy for later, maybe, that's why I say it's a good goal, but what procedure? All right, next one. Bonner County should ensure county policies and regulations encourage developers to consider land for schools and roads. Back to the same argument again.
This, this goes right with the one before.
Yeah, and I, I like the wording. I like the wording better in the second one than in the first one, it just seems to get more to the point. But it, it also needs something like. Some tie in with the school districts, as they have found an. As they have found an necessity for. Now that this is an impact that needs to be mitigated. It's kind of, it's kind of like what this implies, and we've had people tell us this based on complan language. This says Bonner County should ensure, not the school district should ensure, but Bonner, so we're supposed to be the ones. That are investigating this and come to that conclusion. Seemingly irrespective of the school district. That doesn't make sense. Which has been our counterargument to the folks saying. Well, it says here, Bonner County should. Yeah, we, we know what it means, but people are picking that, they're picking that much in the language to say, no, it's Bonner County should.
I think it's better to say the county should examine the impacts.
No, no, but again, it's. And. We set it up earlier. Interface with the school districts to figure out what the impacts are. That covers it. Almost collectively. Expand that one to say, talk about facilities, like it says, facilities, facility features. Can't say fees because you can't impose fees. Measures permitted by Idaho code, that kind of dictates itself, but. Alright, so maybe take that second bullet or this bullet, it's on my page, it's the second bullet. Bonner County should work continually to improve road quality and suitability for school transportation needs. It's not a school policy, it's a road policy.
Yeah, I could, I think that, to me, that would make more sense to be in the transportation section.
It's not gonna be a land use regulation either way. So scrap that one. Bonner County should encourage multiple uses of school facilities.
That's definitely not.
It's a community policy, not a land use regulation. Scrap that one. Bonner County should promote post-secondary vocational. You only, you can only have kids that go to book school in this house. That's it, otherwise you don't get your permit.
Let me take that one out.
Yeah. Bonner County should advocate. Advocate for educational programs on safe roads and other safety issues. By. School districts information. What? School districts information? Oh, oh, I, I just. Then I started getting into what we've heard over the, over the last few years about. Yeah, talking with, so right now the complan talks about the Blanchard area, it solves that with Lakeland School District. That's totally off the table. They stopped doing that four or five years ago.
Well, they didn't kick all the students out, it was through a base of attrition.
Yeah, they, they absorbed the, they absorbed the, the change.
So I believe that point needs to go away as well. Bonner County should advocate for educational programs.
Yes. Yes, that's gone.
And the other, and the next two are not.
Yeah, unfortunately, like I said, I kept giving.
They're not even both.
And they did write one, two comments.
There's three of them.
I think everything, the rest of the page is all comments.
Okay.
Because review Lakeland School District in Bonner County, that's just a comment from things that we found a couple of years ago. In the next one, three, three twenty-one, apparently Lakeland is off the table. Yes, that's true. Next bullet, still need to update classroom adequacy. And again, we had that good discussion with the districts and they're, they're not concerned. They're not saying that. They're, they're acknowledging, sure, when we get pressure, it's from new, new families coming in. Whether that directly equates to. To a new development, they don't even know. They don't know, other than they get transcripts from another school in Oregon or something. Okay, that's a new family. But if it's now. The teacher's gonna recognize this kid because he had two older brothers four, four years ago. That's the same family. They did it forever. So, you know, there's no, there's no absolute correlation to school population and new people coming in.
Isn't the, isn't the rest of this really been subsumed by what we've already talked about?
Ah, let's look at it for a second. So we had that discussion with Bonner County or Lake Ponderay School District. They're not, I asked them specifically about minor land divisions, but again, they don't have any way to track that. They don't know. Getting the kids out of the woods to the buses, right, that's still a concern, but maybe that should be over at the transportation section. We should get from the district some sense of number of students. Okay, that's again, I, I'm still pursuing that with the transportation. People at the two districts, if they can come up with some understanding of how many kids. How many kids ride the bus out of the attendance at an elementary school every day? I think that'd be somewhat revealing. I don't know what it would. It's not gonna lead to a land use regulation. It'll be a nice fact. Yeah. How many kids are on the bus and how many kids are in the classroom? There's an equation.
I think the more germane issue for me would be, can they identify locations on specific routes? Where they have school bus stop safety issues because of road design or whatever. I mean, that's really, at the end of the day.
Yeah.
What somebody should be considering. I don't care how many kids are on the bus, but they need to be able to stop in safe places. Yeah, I'm sure they do.
And, and the district worked very, very carefully with road bridge to ensure that. They put up signs, you know, if there's, if you gotta pick up a kid at the driveway and it's, it's at the end of a curve, there's a sign ahead, school bus stop ahead. I can think of three on Sagel Road, you see it every day. And that's all around the county and they do that annually. Yep, now the, the district, the, the two individuals who. Run the transportation sections for the two districts, they are on it. Full-time, absolutely full-time, very good, very, very. Anyway, so the rest of transportation, our school transportation, as we've already talked. Are we done with this section? Yeah. Transportation itself, so a lot of the stuff we talked about there may find a home in transportation. So just, I, I, like you said, I put down the word that comes out of the, the state code, so here's transportation. An analysis prepared coordination with the local jurisdictions, having authority over the public highways and streets. Now, stop there for a minute. That means Bonner County Road Bridge and the Idaho Transportation Department, AB. Independent Highway District.
Are we in transportation already?
Yeah. Well, no, okay, we're not. We're not, then if we're going up by numbers, the next one after schools, I just. I just texted out of that file and.
I'm waiting to see what she pulls up.
Go to the dots, go to the drive.
Are you gonna pull up? My PowerPoint or did you just?
A word. I didn't do a word file.
I did a PowerPoint. So I don't know if we wanna go through all this. For, for my own use, the way I approached it, as I first pulled out the. Goals and objectives and policies of the existing complan, then I went, looked at each of the subareas and. In, in some cases, did a little bit of a summary of what they said in the body of their document and then looked at whatever objectives and policies they had. And there was a lot of commonality across actually all of it. If you wanna go through all that, we can, or we can, and then at the end, what I do is I kind of synthesize from all that, a set of proposed. Goals, objectives and policies. I did not try to separate goals from objectives, cause I think that's a futile exercise.
Why don't we go to you?
Go to the end and we can, we can refer back if we want to. So maybe stop there, common themes, so that just a summary of, of sort of common themes between all the subareas. And, and to some extent, the existing complan. All of them said something like, we wanna encourage economic development, but we also wanna protect the rural character, the natural resources of the county. So it's a little bit of a trade-off, it's a balancing act, but that was a common statement in all of them. Wasn't so much in the oh-five plan, but in the. In all of the subarea plans, there was mention about doing something with home-based business, businesses. But at the same time, making sure they didn't unduly impact the neighborhood. The next one could go here, could go in ag, but there was a, a lot of desire expressed to, to make sure we protect the agricultural economy. In the county. I think the next one maybe wasn't universal, but in a few of the subareas, I talked about making sure we locate commercial industrial areas. In, in well-defined areas that have the right kind of support, transportation, urban services, et cetera, et cetera. And then, again, this one could be, and I think you did rec Debbie, but. Could be economy, but a big part of the Bonner County economy is driven by tourism, so there was talk about making sure we do things that. Support the, the outdoor recreation opportunities in the county, which again drives a big part of the local economy. So those are common themes. That I pulled out across mostly all the subareas. So then next, proposed goals and objectives. First one, I wasn't sure. It's land use. It showed up a lot, showed up, I think, in the, in the oh-five plan as well. Promote a healthy and diverse economy that provides us, you know, strong. Diverse tax base and living wage jobs. Okay, it's very nice, it's a good goal, but I'm not sure it's really.
Societal goal.
Yeah, yeah. And then, the commerce, I picked up the point about commercial industrial uses being located. I'm sorry, the next one is home, home oc. So. Uses beyond the scale of home occupation should be located in defined areas. In order to encourage cluster development and discourage sprawling to strip development. I think that was a quote I pulled out of one of the subareas. Of commercial and industrial and, and specifically things that are beyond the scale of home occupation type stuff, right?
One of the questions that I had. What's the definition of a strip? Is that a commercial development? I mean, I got a commercial strip center. Or, or is there something that's beyond that? I wasn't sure what that meant.
Well, a strip center usually means it's. It's one property, it's, it's one big shell. Your tenant's gonna come in and he's gonna tell you, I want five thousand square feet. And they're gonna sell another block off and down. Is that correct, Mr. Lynn Scott, in the real estate realm?
But it's, I mean, the implication at the. People don't wanna see is both sides of the highway, one property deep. It just keeps going, all this retail stuff or whatever, shops.
That's what I've always considered. We actually have a definition.
I don't think there is one. It's, it's a, it's a shade away from trying to define rural. But I think.
But on the other hand.
I heard that the other day from somebody. Look what happened. Sagel's just strip development all on the highway. Well, where else do you want it? Do you want it ten, two miles off the highway? That's what Sagel said.
That's exactly what we said. He said, within a quarter mile either side of ninety-five.
Don't want it six miles down.
I think.
So, yeah, I mean, again. Unless, it's very interesting because. Bonner Mall, a strip center.
Mall because you can walk inside.
But still, it's a, it's a group of properties together. I was gonna say. The Sagel Center, there's a subdivision, a commercial subdivision called Sagel Center. How many lots? Matt, it's eight or ten lots or something like that? For the post offices. That was the first development in there. Now, the, the tractor company and the, the lot, the, the storage lot, those are all within Sagel Center. So that's not a strip development per se. It was a bigger chunk of property, not just the single property adjacent to the highway. And that was the, that was the response to that back in two thousand eight. That was, that was, that was the answer.
You know, as I sit here and think about it, and maybe this is just me, but. That to me is not so much of a, I can think of a lot of examples of strip development around. There's a lot of them in Ponderay you can think about. I'm not sure that's really the issue. I think the big issue is. Put the commercial industrial uses in well-defined areas where they have the right kind of infrastructure to support them. And how that's implemented, how that's designed is less of a, less of an issue personally to me. And other people may wanna discourage.
I think that's right. I mean, I, I think that's really kind of what I was starting to go with. I'd kind of eliminate that and discourage.
Yeah.
One of the issues with common strip development is they end up being individual parcels with individual driveways onto the road. So driveway, driveway, driveway. So you go out of this one and the next one, out of this one, the next one, no cross connections. So most codes have said, no, I'm sorry, you gotta make cross connections. So you don't force all of your retail traffic to go out on the highway every time they wanna go to. Charlie Brown's from Joe Smith's. That's the way it used to be, cause everybody was, oh, no, I can't share a driveway. So the code started forcing people to do it. And gee whiz, it works great. They come to me because they went to him. So anyway, but it's still, they still recognize.
Every, every state most.
But the, 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 the connection to sprawl is, if you just develop that single lot on the highway, it's just gonna be going and going and going. And you're never gonna say no to the last guy on the line. No, you can't have it. Well, everybody else had it up to me, why can't I have? Well, it just keeps going.
But isn't, isn't encouraging cluster development?
Yes, to me.
It, it should be. I mean, again, that's Sagel Center.
Yeah. I, I'm okay if we, if we took off everything after the, from and discourage sprawling strip development, to say we wanna encourage cluster development. Of commercial and industrial uses. No, I, I would just from, ended after cluster development, period. Delete the rest of it, yeah. So the next one, I just picked up a point from, again, I probably copied this from one of the complans, or the subarea plans. To make sure commercial and industrial uses are operated such that we. Protect our natural resources. There's some list of what that thing, what those mean.
Oh, yeah. Certainly could lead to a land use regulation.
The next one, I know this was in the Sagel subarea. Because we have a few areas in Sagel, like Garfield Bay and places like that, Bottle Bay. That are sort of like little resort neighborhoods, if you will. It would certainly apply up, up at Schweitzer. But. Support small businesses, and I listed a few examples, markets, restaurants, rec activities and so on. That provide services which support resort residents and visitors in their local communities. Now, as I wrote that or copied it from my subarea plans, I, I thought, is that really specific enough? Will people understand that we're talking about places like Schweitzer, like Garfield Bay, like Bottle Bay? A few other locations probably that fit that, maybe, maybe somewhere up Coolin, maybe, you know. Will people understand those? That's what we're talking about, so I don't know.
Does it? So this is under, this is under economics.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yep.
But that also, also, just like you said, areas that are recognized. Well, that's one thing. I've questioned the complan. Land use designations and that is on the code. It feels right to me that we have, like Garfield Bay, that is a rec area. But there's other shoreline areas along Ponderay and on the river that are not designated rec, but that's what they are. Why, maybe we should look at that when we get down to designation. Looking at those areas to purely say, yeah, this is predominantly a recreation area and therefore that fits. It makes sense.
I, I agree, and I had thought we would have that discussion.
When we get to.
But, but then I left the subarea committee.
Wanted to get that.
Yeah.
I don't think they ever had.
Yeah, I don't think they did.
We talked about it.
Yeah, yeah.
But obviously.
I think that's a good discussion to have. Is. Is Garfield Bay a rec or is it a resort community?
Resort community.
I think it's a resort community, and I think Bottle Bay is a resort community also.
That's another discussion to have.
Around the lake, yeah. Okay, that's why I'm confused. Alright.
Leads to the creation of.
Okay, alright. So then the next one, picked up on the idea of, of the home-based businesses, so I said, enable development of small. Um, so then the next one, uh, picked up on the idea of, of the home-based businesses. So I said, incur, enable development of small-scale cottage industries and home-based occupations while protecting the surrounding areas from adverse impacts.
Well, there's plenty of problem we have. All season for home-based.
Yeah, it's already there in code. But this, this backs it up. I mean, this, that's the, this, this is the beginning. Code already embodies that. And it does, I mean, the, the adverse impacts that's throughout the code.
Right.
We're not going to do anything.
Right.
Stop that.
Right. Lots of words in there. There was, um, a definition actually in the Selly sub area plan. Um, and I think they talked about it as being something that only employed members of the immediate household. I think, I think were the words that they used. I'd have to go again and again. They actually had a definition. Is it?
It's a thing that's redundant.
Well, or does this just set it up?
It was unfortunate because we lost a
But again, you know, language like this, it's not, doesn't say some of those real defining words. So it's general, but it sets it up so the code could
Yeah, I think you have a discussion in, in, I agree. You have a discussion in the code to better define
Yeah.
what you're talking about and what the criteria would be for those businesses. And you would set those criteria with an eye towards making sure you don't unduly impact the surrounding neighborhood, right? You wouldn't want it to be so big that the, that the neighbors get impacted. I don't think you have to draw the line so hard that it has to be only people in that household, but you probably do want to talk about how many employees. You probably want to talk about how many, how many typical trips from customers per day, those kinds of things.
That's what I remember. We talked about a priest like was not so much the employees, but how many people.
In and out, in and out for day.
Was it, or was it just a small manufacturing?
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. So you would define those in the code.
So here's, here's that quote.
Cause it's a size-related.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to open up a mill. In the ag area.
So let me, let me read this cottage industry to, to, to enable cottage industries to grow in the area. A cottage industry is a small-scale decentralized business, often operated by labor force that consists of family units or individuals working at home with their own equipment.
So, yeah, yeah. Take Brian's. Get your woodmiser and you set it up in your backyard.
What if you want to make salmon planks?
You got your own equipment and your kids work in there? You're good to go.
Yeah. No, if you, if, so if, if we want to do a mill in the ag area.
So, so when we get to the policies, you will see that I have said that you can have a policy that commercial businesses can be located in non-commercial areas conditionally, which basically is what our code says today.
So you do CUP.
And you look at, you look at the specific characteristics of the business that's being proposed. Determine what conditions you need to, to apply to it in order to make sure that it doesn't impact the neighborhood.
But recognizing that.
Do we look at the cottage?
Yeah, maybe it's just. I think even though we're talking about here, small-scale cottage, what about large-scale cottage?
He had more than 15 or.
Yeah.
Folks, whatever.
But is it, is that, is that a cottage industry?
Well, what, why would it? So if you're doing truck farming out there, you have a bunch of people working.
Yeah. Agriculture slippers.
Well, but it's, it's both. I mean, I put, I have some Ag stuff in here. And I think my answer would be in the code, there should be specific criteria. Whether it's employees or customer visits per day, or whatever those criteria are. And, and those set the, the boundary between what you can just, I guess you probably have to get a license or something, but what you can just do because you're, 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 you're characterized as being a home occupation or however we define it. And above those limits, you have to get a CUP.
So if we take the mechanical company that we granted he grew his company on this piece of property, now he's in town. So we should encourage. Encourage him to be in town, maybe in the county, get that money. But we should encourage that growth.
I, I, I agree, but I think to me it's, what, what do you allow to happen administratively, if you will? And, and what do you allow to happen with more detailed review by the zoning commission and potentially the board? Um, and, and, and it's based on the scale to me. I mean, below a certain scale, you just say, we want those, those guys can just do what they want to do. And I guess like probably have to apply for a license or something. I don't know, but yeah, but, but it's relatively administrative. Go out to form, probably pay your fee and you get your permit, right? As long as you meet the criteria. Yeah, yeah. Right. And above that, then it's a bigger scale thing and you need a CUP. If you're not in a commercial or industrial zone there.
As folks get maybe pushed out of town because things are not so expensive.
Yeah.
So, so we have, for instance, last year, a couple of years ago, we issued a I think so, for that little, little, uh, home occupation, machine shop, no machine shop, auto truck fix it off of next to Culver.
Compass.
Yeah. So his neighbor comes in and says, wow, he's generated a lot of traffic. I could bleed off his traffic if I put a basket factory up. You know, with my kids weaving baskets next door to them. Then the next guy does one. All of a sudden we got a commercial area. Do we ding the last guy in? No. I mean, I, I don't know. I, could it lead to that? Granted, the, the first guy in, he's all by himself. Something he, his family decided they can do, they can make a living here. Fine. But are we opening the door? Unfortunately, that's a tough situation because why shouldn't the third guy down be able to do it too? It just happens to be two properties down.
But if we don't open the door, are we taking somebody's rights?
Well, or, yeah.
And, and I think we want to open the door at least certainly for the first guy, right? That's what everybody's saying.
Especially if it's a, it's a purely allowed use. If it's a conditional use, then I think that it would have to pass muster as being allowed use under condition. So but again, it's, it's, we're not depriving him of every economic use of his property. What he thinks. So it's, yeah. And that's been explained to us time and time again. That's, that's part of the test, part of the.
And I'd also say what you described, I mean, that's how commercial areas emerge.
Yeah. It is.
And it happens, right?
So, all right. So, all right. So you say, okay, this allows in the code. And if it starts happening, we review it. They say, you know what? That ought to be a commercial note. Oh. Problem solved.
Yeah.
Potential.
Yeah.
That's how it works, right?
Yeah.
It isn't a painted once and it's done, like it was done 17 years ago. It's it's supposed to be dynamic.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay if we want to wordsmith this a bit, you know, I think cottage industries and home-based occupations is probably somewhat redundant, but I, I, I wanted maybe because I came from one of the sub area groups, I wanna, I want the sub area people to look at this, these things and recognize that, ah, yeah, they listen to us.
Yes.
All right. So in looking at it, uh, tonight here, the, the third one from the bottom, policies regarding economic development activities shall seek to mitigate the impacts and such factors is, and there's a list of things there. I don't know if that's not redundant with the one above to talk about natural resources, but maybe those two could be combined somehow with, with a little bit more thought to the words. Then the, the, the next one was about support for the recreational element of the county's economy. So increase support for outdoor recreation in Bonner County, encourage and pursue public acquisition of additional access to public lands or water, campgrounds and recreation areas.
Really? We want to have public acquisition. But this, and again, that's good.
Within some, some of the sub area plans.
Yeah, we'll address that when I get to recre.
Is that?
It wasn't, it was a huge discussion at Priest Lake and I think it's a.
Anyway, but is it? What land use regulation?
It's a land use action.
Well, no.
I, I, I consider that to be a land use action.
On the county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a direction to Bonner County.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rather than saying to a landlord, I'm sorry, you gotta provide a 30-foot access down to the lake through your property. Supreme Court's already dealt with that.
Yeah.
Twice in a row to say, oh, I'm sorry.
There's a whole range of, of possibilities, I think here that, um, could range from the county making decisions to protect existing access to public lands and water.
Yeah.
And I can, I can think of one specific example there.
Well, that's why we have the courts.
Well, but no, I think I would, before you get to the courts, we have a comp plan because it's supposed to reflect the desires of the community and inform the government about how they're, about the kinds of things the community would like to see them do over a long period of time, right? And it's a common theme in more than one of the sub area plans that, that they wanted to do things to. First, first we start with a recognition that recreational tour, outdoor recreational-based tourism is a significant element of the county economy. Do we want to shut that down? Do we want to encourage it to grow? Do we want to sort of leave it where it is? I think at least in the Sagal area, the, the conclusion was we wanted to do things to try and encourage it.
Encouragement.
Then pursue. Yes, that's at the other end of the spectrum, right? One end of the spectrum is protect those existing places where you have public access to, to public lands and, and water. And at the other end of the spectrum would be actually go out and pursue.
Why don't you, why don't we put in here? Uh, preserve public access.
I'm fine with that.
Rather than pursue acquisition. And it's no, no, but it's still.
It's different.
Well.
It is different.
Existing access and not going out, buying it or.
Right.
You know?
But when it goes south, there's enough folks that are going to step in.
But as a land use regulation?
Well, no, no, no. I'm, I'm just saying, when, when it goes beyond that, that regulation that they do with her.
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, you need to block public access.
But who's, uh, it's not going to be, it's not going to be Henry Smith developing his property that's going to block public access.
Could be.
I doubt it unless somebody's going to claim that that's a public right across their lane or not in England.
Well, but it happens all the time up here. Way it happened with Dover Bay. Oh, it's where we always went.
I know, but that's.
But it doesn't matter. And so that's why I don't like any verbiage that talks about acquiring and.
Protecting.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I don't see it coming into a land use regulation to say to a proposed development, you shall not block something or whatever. Cause boy, that's a huge legal issue.
No, no, you shall provide.
Or you shall.
If it was there before, you know.
Yeah.
Well, it, it was there in what capacity?
Legally or just by public use. Public use law is there, but it's, boy, oh boy.
Yeah.
Stands on its own. Again, you know, the coastal commission. We want to say it will protect access to public lands.
So some of these, as we've already seen.
Maybe as we go through and look at the element and read the element for the it could be tweaked.
Yeah. And I still would, I, I, we, there's enough of these goals and policies that don't have legitimate connection to land use regulation, but they're a solid policy. And it's like, maybe there's another section at the end of the comp plan. These are filtered out of the goals and these apply to county government.
Should we, should we say? Don't vacate a public road that provides access to Lake Ponderay? I mean, that's a land use act on the part of the county.
That's true.
And depending on how.
Whether, whether the legislature.
Decide it's either, you know, it, it, it may be a situation where they gave up, or they tried to give up public access to the lake.
Yeah.
Legal public access, not just, this is something that everybody's been doing for a long period of time, but legal public access. The courts are gonna, the courts are gonna decide that. Courts are gonna decide that. I believe it is. That's why the road was built, was built so that, to connect people to boat traffic, to the ferry boats. That's why it was built.
There was a road.
They went away.
It wasn't built for cars. In 1910, nobody owned a car in Sagal.
Not even Mr. Jerk.
Yeah.
So this is a specific issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's an example of a land use act. It isn't land use regulation. It's a land use act.
That's one thing that we haven't talked much about.
Encompassed by protecting.
I think it is. I think it is.
Land use, land use code is one thing. Then it's the code, the state code says, or action up to the preamble to all of this.
Right.
Duties.
Right.
And we haven't talked much about what is a land use action? It's recognized a land use action is when the county makes a decision on a file. That's a land use action. Okay, that's one definition, but also when the board of county commissioners does something land use wise in a code or anything, that's a land use action as well. So, right. So if they're talking about a vacation or they're talking about changing the code, that's a land use action. Land use code, so.
How did they come to have the park at Garfield Bay for the people?
I don't know. I don't.
It's a county park.
I think like, but it may have been federal land before that.
It was.
Like the campground, the campground was a federal.
Does it actually seem to be a county park?
It is, it is. No, it is absolutely a county park.
We have two accesses up Priest Lake that say public access.
No, it's absolutely. It's a county park. If you want, if you want, you know, call parks and rec and.
Right. It's very, very few of those.
Garfield Bay.
Okay.
It was boat launch.
Yeah, I'm just really uncomfortable with anything that talks about pursuing an inquiry.
Or we just.
Yeah, I, and I agree with everyone.
Well, that's a first.
So the rest of your rest of your document, David.
Then the last one was, uh, and I think, I think this was maybe in the Priest Lake one, but I think it's, it's a big issue. Support local businesses by enabling development of workforce housing in appropriate locations. And I think back to, we used, we had four, five months ago, we had a, an item from, uh, it was Hills, I think Hills Resort, who needed to request a zone change
or.
to build employee housing across the street from where they are because it was not zoned appropriately where we allow multi-employee housing, multifamily housing, whatever the regulations.
So could that, could that last statement be combined with the top statement to just expand it to say home occupation and associated housing?
No, because it's not home occupation.
Right.
Hills Resort is not a home occupation.
That's true. That's true.
Right, okay. And, and I know, you know, Schweitzer's having big issues.
Schweitzer, sir.
Right, right.
Well, I think, I think workforce housing is, is a, is a big issue because.
Yeah.
And it will.
And it directly affects the economy.
Absolutely. Can't get employees.
Right.
You're not gonna be able to open the restaurant.
And especially like up there or even Schweitzer, it's long drive.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a little.
Right, right. You don't want to live down in Priest River.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's workforce housing, specific workforce, workforce housing that's going in.
Right.
Well, I think, I don't, to the extent that we have to encourage that.
It's again, it's a nice goal, but I don't see that that's going to end up in a regulation.
I think it could, I think it could, no, no. I think it could change some of our zoning codes potentially.
I think it could.
We might, we might want to allow work, employee, workforce housing in more zones than we do today.
I think it's a zoning issue.
Yeah.
And density.
Yeah, something. Right. Right, right.
Okay.
All right.
Cool. Hold those.
15 minutes, we're supposed to raise your hand. We're on fire.
You're, he's running.
I'm just giving you like an update. What we don't get tonight, we'll get.
Personally, my opinion is it's more important to have the robust discussion and get through it through them in fifteen minutes.
No, I'm just standing close my neck.
Um, so policies. I decided to be fairly specific in this one, I guess, but it's commercial industrial uses shall be unconditionally permitted only in areas identified in the comp plan as being suitable for such development. Valuation of suitability shall be based on availability of urban services, adequate access to hard surface county, I question mark, or state maintain roads and other factors that may impact the surrounding community. So I'm thinking this is, on the one hand, it's, they're unconditionally permitted in places that eventually will be zoned commercial and or industrial. And the criteria for deciding what should be commercial and or industrial is, you look at things like urban services and hard service roads.
Can we talk about urban services? I mean. Yeah.
Again, back to that definition.
Both water and sewer or?
And is that?
You didn't say everybody.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say that.
Um, in my mind, it's, it's water and sewer.
Has to be.
Does that? Has to be.
Is that I'd put in a septic and drill the well?
No, it's, it's.
It's, it's. Sandpoint City runs a water line.
Community, I don't know what the right term is, community, community water, community sewer.
So, okay, so it could be drill a well, but it's to, at a scale that is shared system and it's septic, but at a scale that is a shared system.
But the definition of urban services is pretty specific.
It, it is when you look up just urban services, but the way we apply it in Bonner County is different than that definition.
All kinds of layers.
We have.
So call it septic, that's applying a tank, you know. Sewer is sewage pipes, a treatment plant. I mean, that's the pure engineering difference between the two.
There's been a lot of gray area between that. That's why I think it's important to, to, to clarify that here in the policies.
Well.
Cause you could do an individual septic.
Well, yeah, so everybody's got their own tank and they're all pumping to the same field. Is that what you mean?
That's, that's Sagal Valley Estates.
Okay.
I didn't think that was encompassed.
So many, so.
So there's some provisions for density where if you have a go like in the rec zone or the suburban zone, you can go to two and a half, that are one. Or if you have a shared well, the same idea, as long as it's serving a group of.
So, so I'll tell you that when I wrote that, my intention was to draw a very bright red line and say, commercial industrial uses above the scale of cottage industries and home, home occupation. You need to be on a real sewer system and a real water system.
A water sewer district.
Real, yes. But now, that doesn't say you can't go elsewhere, but if you wanna go elsewhere, it requires more review, you go through a conditional use permitting process, we look at the specifics of the business that's being proposed, the scale of it, how many employees, how many customers, what kind of business, and may, may find a lot of places that would go through, but.
But, but as I read that, it was like, we encourage, we encourage, we encourage, we encourage, we put a chokehold on. Because as you go up ninety-five north and you look at Woods and then Samuels and Elmira, there's no sewer, there's no water, it's all septic and whatever, but, but without those areas for commercial industrial, a lot of people would be hosed up there. They'd be driving clear into Sandpoint for, for services. So, so a very bright line, I, I see where you're going, especially on, on heavy impact industrial and commercial stuff, you're absolutely right. But I, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot and hurting some people in more remote areas.
I mean, they couldn't get a condition.
Yeah, they could probably get, they could probably get a commercially, conditionally used permit, you know?
So let's dig into their pockets and have them come in and go through that process.
Well, but you're also protecting the interests of people who live in an area that isn't zoned commercial. They don't expect.
Yeah, but there's others, there's other factors like, like the highway and topography and there's.
Well, so. Yeah, I mean, in some cases, maybe, maybe we might revisit the zoning. Maybe there's an argument for, I hate to complicate the zoning regulations, but maybe there's an argument for another class of commercial that doesn't require urban services.
Yeah.
But put some, put some limit somehow on the scale of the businesses that can go in there on an unconditional basis.
One of the arguments of the past between industrial and light industrial. That nature of.
Yeah.
Well, light industrial, they're limited. If you're beyond that, you're pure industrial and you need X, Y, Z. So maybe there's flavors, shades of commercial.
I'm just leery of, of a complete open door sort of policy in areas that are remote and only served by septic and, and water and.
And I think.
Anybody could go in there and build any kind of.
Under a concrete, what's in your manufacturing? Have they have portable john and, and a well? Or we're bad. You don't have a ton.
That's the thing, it, it's, it's got to be quick back to the actual use.
So when we talk about shades, I think, like for industrial, absolutely, okay, you gotta have hard pipe, everything to there. But then commercial, you're stepping down.
Waste, not just you.
Yes, and then as you step down to commercial, then there's a different, you know, level, and then you step down to rural service center, then you're, it's something else. Maybe that's the way to get the different shades. And then write it specifically to you.
So sizing that, it does deal, a lot of it, we've gotta think back to the land itself. And the state code says, figure out what the land can handle. Perforating the depths, so. Inciting those areas, we need to look deeper at what the soils are, what the geography, what the stability, everything else. And then say, okay, that is sufficient at a broad scale, that's sufficient for commercial, industrial, residential.
So two responses, one to your question. If under a concrete wanted to do that, and they came in and said, look, we don't have very many employees, we have trucks coming in at all day and we, and, you know, there's three guys who are here all day and we have porta potties for them. Well, that should be an easy CUP to issue then, on that basis, right? So really, not much of a barrier to them doing that. My question about what the land can handle is I don't see that anybody's actually doing that.
No, but it is, it is.
And handle health is not doing that.
I know, but we somehow need to, we need to investigate that further and see how we could accomplish that because the state code very plainly says in the preamble to the land use plan act, what the land can accommodate. It's there and we all just, oh, well, yeah, sure, we can do it.
Yeah.
I know. So there's a lot of things like that in that realm that just, we've lost over them for thirty, fifty years. Never gotten down to it, but nobody's ever challenged it per se. They've taken notes a lot. But it's a, it's a point, I mean, it's, it's right there in the code. It says, what's the land can accommodate? So.
I have a good memory, but it's short. Sort of joking.
No. Oh, because, because the, the land use. Just the land, and what do we call them? Land use districts, land use areas? I don't know. Designations, land use designations are defined in the.
Yeah, well, at present, they're defined in the comp.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a. And it's, it's supplemented.
And it identifies commercial and industrial. In principle, I, I think I'd be okay with the suggestion like you made, I mean, we'd have to talk about the details.
Yeah, I think we define that.
But, but in principle, I'd be okay with that.
I just know that, that in this county, that we are, we are incredibly limited on areas for commercial industrial. And there are businesses that would like to be here and we could certainly use the jobs and the tax base, but, but I've, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go, even in the last few years because of the limited amount of commercial, industrial type of stuff, so I think we've gotta find a solution. I think we might be throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Maybe that's one more thought, or, or thinking it through. If it, if it, if the uses are necessary to the economic viability of the community, which is what this is about. How do we purposely and appropriately make provision for? Does that statement do it or does that statement prohibit?
Well, so we read through the next few maybe.
Yeah.
And what I was trying to do was to talk about this, you know, how we deal with industrial, commercial, industrial uses at different scales, so. Commercial uses could be con- conditionally permitted, so I guess I did actually draw the line on industrial. I don't remember, I don't remember if I did that consciously, sure. That was just, if I just inadvertently left industrial off the second one, but commercial uses could be conditionally permitted in other areas as long as you decide that they can, they can, they can be there without unduly impacting the surrounding area with the right conditions, which is kind of what we do today, I think. Then there was.
Back to your first one, I think you, you gotta expand the hard surface.
Yeah, yeah. So take my question mark off and.
Well, yeah, because there's definitely properties.
I think the reason I questioned that is, I didn't know, I was thinking, who maintains ninety-five?
State.
State maintains them.
Federal government doesn't maintain that.
All right, I was, I, I wasn't sure about that. That's why I wrote states.
I think that's true.
Maintain irritation in the state.
I'm sorry?
Call it just publicly.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah.
Then they can go to like highway districts.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, oh, that's true, because we do have that highway district, yeah, all right. So then I had a bullet on small scale home mock. About its business or whatever you wanna call it, encourage those reasonable conditions on such usage should be set to minimize adverse impacts to the neighborhood. Based, based on factors including, but not limited to hours of operation, traffic volume generated by the business. So it gives people some clues about how to go write some regulations about that, which we probably already have reasonable, I think we already have reasonable regulations there. Foster agri- agriculture opportunities by protecting agricultural practices and activities. I think that came out of one of the sub area policies.
I don't.
Not is that resolved to a.
Somebody, somebody buys up a field that's been bellowed for ten years, but it's got a hundred year history of ag rustle and they wanna develop those houses through the same home.
I think, and this shows up in, it probably, we don't need this here, maybe. Um, I think it's, I think what they were maybe getting at is, um, and I think I did include it maybe in the ag section. What's the name of the state regulation on farming?
The Farm Act.
Right, the Farm Act or whatever it's called. I think, I think they, they had a bullet, they had a policy, ensuring that the county.
But, and again, you know, it's a laudable goal, a laudable goal, but how do you do it? How do you do it short of having the public subsidize farming? Either, oh, you want, you're interested in selling your property because you can't make it a farm because there's the annual income goes like this, right? Just the federal government does it all the time, put in for a loss. Okay, it's gonna keep you afloat for another year, buy a new combine. And eventually that dries up too, but that's, I don't know how, again, somebody sells their property because they just can't farm it anymore. The kids don't wanna take over the farm. And are we gonna say no because we're supposed to preserve agricultural possibilities? Yikes, I understand the principle.
But even, even beyond that, I'm not sure what foster.
I'm fine with it. Take it out. I, I think what they're getting at is they envisioned um, land use regulations that would prevent farmers from doing what farmers do. And they don't, they didn't wanna see those.
Prevent them from selling on ground.
No, from farming.
From farming?
Right. It's the things that this, I, I've never read the.
That was my interpretation.
The right to farm act, but I assume it's.
Yeah.
It's prohibition on those regulations that would prevent farmers from doing what farmers do.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
I think that's what, that what, that's what they were getting.
Don't, don't do anything that's going to encumber that process or.
Right, right.
So.
I debated on the next one whether it should be here or an ag, could be either place. Um, I wasn't sure. There was two sub area plans. It was somebody must have been copying from somebody that used exactly this, exactly the same words. I didn't know what congregation meant unless they were talking about.
Sounds like, no, that comes right out of the ag duties. I think that, if we go back to sixty-five oh eight, I think that's right out of the investigation, wasn't it? That congregation. I think I, I've always taken that to mean grouping farming properties together, not breaking them up, not having sixty acre farm and a twenty acre subdivision, a three acre industrial site, then a sixty acre farm. Oh, continuity, that's a difference.
When you talk about distribution, would they need for pitch water?
Yeah, very likely. Um, just all the things that go along with it in a totally, almost predominantly farming area. And unfortunately, this is, this is the complaint, but I, we, we don't have those. Well, they are lost.
They are lost because the, the, the agricultural water has been converted to residential water and sold it out.
And et cetera, and federal government said, stop growing cows. How many dairy farms were unsullied a hundred years ago, eighty years ago, seventy years ago? Lots.
The best, in, in the eighties, there was over forty some odd dairies in the county now.
The Fed said, stop, make it too much milk. So buy out, pay not to have cows. That changed the entire agricultural community a lot.
We took thousands of cows out of the ditch.
Yep.
Kind of changed the cycle.
It changed everything.
The comp plan, there it is.
Changed everything. It was no longer the thing to do.
As I see it, that's, I mean, that's not really what this is now. This is like small scale.
Yes, I think it was. I, I think, I wasn't, setting aside, I didn't understand what they meant by congregation, but. Yeah.
I don't know, that's, that's my, my take on it, but I mean. Did that, and you were looking at the state code, did it come from the state code section on ag?
I didn't.
It did not.
It did not. I've read that, maybe it wasn't one of the sub area.
It was in two of them, at least two of them.
Where'd they get it?
I don't know.
Out of the farm act?
Yeah.
What do they mean by support? We mean allow?
Yes, I, I mean, that's how I would.
Support, don't, you know.
I, I would say, right, well, no, I, I, in this context, I would interpret that to mean develop land use regulations that allow for agriculture, local agriculture.
Oh, right, allow.
Right. Things like farm related education programs, retail, you know, farmers markets, that's probably the retail sales. Point, point, you know, a- at the farm, let, let people go buy products at the farm.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we say that instead of saying support? Those, again, this is.
Land use regulations.
So this is.
I'm okay with that.
This is both a directive to the county, put this in the code to allow these things.
Mm-hmm.
But then, and the land use regulation would come from that.
Mm-hmm.
So there's code sections that are, and the people are just not hearing to them, but for, or vegetable stands and stuff like that. There's hours of operations and weeks of operation. Some of these guys were working here. Well, as we work through here, we need to go back, check those cottage farming industries. Well, as we work through here, we need to go back, check those cottage farming industries. So, in case somebody wants to say, well, you know, I'll book it, that's very good. So, on Saturday.
Yeah, um, because, right, I think the one that, we did the hearing a couple of years ago, and it was for a, a family that had property up on Sully, about a quarter mile off the highway. And they wanted to have a, a little stand there, a restaurant, that, the yogurt folks. And they do, but it has a condition useful. In an ag zone. Yeah, because like then, I, I was so interested in it. I went up and I bought a hamburger at their stand, a week later. Bought a, something out of their little yogurt stand. It was all family, every kid in that family was out there doing stuff that was fabulous. But it was, why was it a condition useful? Because it, it-
Talking about hours of operation, days a week and everything, they had to lay all that out.
I can understand it. Just from the neighborhood standpoint, because.
So Dawn, my, my recollection is, is because if, if they were just producing theirs, whatever there, and then taking it somewhere else to sell it, versus having the public come to their property, that because you have the po- the public on your property, there's a higher standard.
Yep. Plus, they weren't producing it on the site. His brother was producing the yogurt.
And they were just selling it there.
And they were trucking it out here to sell on site. And he was cooking hamburgers and stuff, you know. It was a little farm stand, but it was also a.
Wrap around and look at things for the cottage farming industry.
Yeah.
Kind of look at their operations.
Make those determinations. Why we say, where's the bright line? Develop land use regulations to allow Bonner County's agricultural heritage by any way.
I, I think that's fine. That's good.
Yeah.
More, more clear what we want to do.
So again, that's a directive to the county to put that in the code.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next one is just sort of mainly is about just some, some site requirements, buffering, you know, like we have requirements for, uh, maximum size of a storage unit, those, those kind of requirements is, you know. Develop those standards to make sure that those sorts of uses, commercial and industrial uses are appropriate for the community. And, uh, we protect the neighborhood and the environment from the impacts of those kind of things. I think we have a lot of that stuff in the code already.
Yeah, tons of it.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think there's necessarily anything we need to do.
That last, the last, the last three words.
Yeah.
End of U shit.
Yeah, and I don't know why that ended up being underlined. I, I but I copied that from one of the sub-area plans. It came from a place where that became a disaster, so I'd be happy to cross that off.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a-
That is cop occasionally. We had that one out by, uh, Old Town, north of Old Town. People next door said, you allow him to do that on that block, he's in block my view. Oh, cell towers, and it's in there. That's one reason that, that one cell tower didn't go.
And then finally, and then finally, I had a policy about, uh, employee housing. Just to review the land use regulations to make sure we enable that in the appropriate areas of town.
Good. Yeah, that, that is to tie to it.
Did you want to change anything on that third bullet from the bottom?
Yes, we wanted to say, uh, enable, what were your words, Alan?
Develop land use regulations. Allow Bonner County's, yeah, to allow Bonner County's agricultural heritage. And take our congregation, since we don't know what it means. To allow Bonner County's, Bonner County's agricultural heritage to be or, or-
Yeah.
Prefers not to produce.
Maintain.
Continue. To maintain local food production.
Yeah.
Bonnie, we're going to go to the transportation element.
Okay.
And then we'll finish up with that, because Dawn had a study for that for his presentation.
Got a PowerPoint?
No. No, I didn't.
So just to, just to finish this, that's all, is that, is that the diagonal, are we going to move in the rest of it?
No, I remove, uh, support.
Maintain. No, 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 let me, let me think about this. Maintain.
By enabling, I, I would say delete everything from support Bonner County's agriculture heritage, delete that, keep by. So be by enabling local food production.
Take out the period after maintain.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
Give me time to put together a PowerPoint.
Make it read, make it read.
Give me a time to learn what a PowerPoint is. Bunch of sentences with different color highlighting.
Yeah.
I think I can do that.
Fancy, fancy, fancy.
With smoke signals?
Okay.
So are we done? We're done with that, yes, that was it.
Okay.
No, that was.
Or economic development.
Economic development.
Too much ag in there.
Transportation.
Yeah, what was?
Okay, alright.
Yes, it is. Okay, so first off, let's, let's just look at that top section. This is right out of sixty-five oh eight. There we go. Analysis prepared in coordination with the local jurisdictions, having authority over the public highways and streets. So again, like I said, that, that's, that everybody, but in the unincorporated area, so it's not the cities. Showing the general locations and width of systems, major, major traffic thoroughfares, uh, traffic ways, the streets and so forth. All of that is included in Bonner County's transportation plan, because they listed out all the roads. I, I'm not so sure that it has, it talks about right-of-way widths and everything in there. No, but again, if, if these components are to lead to land use regulations, the existing system, unless Bonner County is ready to say any, uh, what's your word? Right-of-way, it's a prescriptive right, right-of-way, so by state code it's fifty feet wide. If we want to say the land use regulation like the county used to years ago, you're adjacent to a fifty foot wide right-of-way, twenty-five feet off the center line. You will dedicate five feet along with your subdivision. That used to be required years ago. And I don't know if it got challenged, or somebody just softened and said, no, no, because fifty feet, if you're going to improve a road to a twenty-four foot width with six foot shoulders, it doesn't fit in fifty feet.
Can't have sixty, so five foot on your side.
Very close to sixty, it fits. And to leave a utility corridor as well. Fifty doesn't make it. And, and this has been contended with around the state a lot. Some states and counties have that requirement. The condition of approval of your development, you will dedicate to the public five feet or whatever, to bring it up to a certain standard. And the standards are described, and this is where it would happen. But I'm, I'm wary of, of following that precisely to say make sure that there's adequate width and rights of way on public roads. Wow, that's a huge step. And it does make a difference. One way that some codes have handled that is, if you, if your dedication of right-of-way takes you below the area required for density, you can negate it and say, we had it to begin with because we've dedicated to this public, so you still get your density out of your subdivision, you have ten lots instead of nine. Yeah. So that's one way to do it. So anyway, that's a background discussion. So it talks about that, but again, a lot of what's described in that first big long sentence is in Bonner County's roadway plan. That's also a list of capital improvements that are revisioned over the next whatever, ten, fifteen years.
So, back to the five foot, just to clarify, you're saying that it should be in there?
Well, it, it's, in most cases, if it isn't there now, the county's got to go back in and buy it when they do a road improvement, a major road improvement, which has happened.
Yep.
And that may displace something. That may really cause some problems on a piece of property.
Well, I can think of one that, that I saw that-
That's already in place.
Yes, right, right. Structures or, or wells or whatever, and these all kinds of things. That's, that's why, that's why it's always been taken in this country, that, that public rights of way are one step below what they are in England. They're, they're, they're sacrosanct, they're, they're very important for the public good. And therefore you can't really argue that it's not needed. So anyway. But, yeah, Josh, and, and that's just-
But when we dealt with it, it was like, these people had given five feet, and these people hadn't, and then these had, and and so when we, when we talked to Roden Bridge, they're like, what the hell are we going to do with this? It's a jigsaw puzzle.
They have to go in, if they're going to prove, they got to go in and buy the five feet of those that didn't dedicate it.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to. So it's a public expenditure. And this was part of the reason why, and that's been upheld by the courts. Yeah, it's a classic use. Yeah, and, and, or, yes, uh, public acquisition. So, so that first sentence, I think, is already, so we just reference that, and, and there's no.
Does that come right to Bonner point in that service road? Goes what?
Oh, the new one, Josh's road?
No, 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 it's not being invited.
It's the Pilch Memorial Highway.
The sections we have at those folks.
Oh, 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 yeah, well, that's, that's a lot of it. That's a prescriptive right. That's not a de-degrade rule. So it's only fifty feet wide. And if you're on flat ground, a, a minimal eighteen foot wide road with no shoulders fits with itches. But you want to go to a better road, which is the demand, especially I go there. If, if, if Whiskey Jack has expanded to a twenty-four foot section with three foot shoulders, it's not going to fit in fifty feet, let alone if you're up against the hillside or something, and you go to chase that hillside and put a right-of-way line at the top of it or the bottom of it or something. So, uh, yeah, I, I but I'm, that first sentence, I'm not so sure that it leads to, just reviewing the existing system, it leads to a land use regulation unless it's going to be a dedication right-of-way to bring them up to what's needed on that road. And it's a public use rather than that, so it's an exaction from the property owner, but it does have legal basis. But again, is the county, you know, do we just put it in there and suggest it? Or just leave it that, well, down to the goals? I'm just reading what's in the state code now. So it's that top in the layer text. No, but I'm just saying, that's the basis of it, so then we get down to goals, sending the scene. What was?
Scene is set.
Scene is set.
The second part says, this component may also make recommendations about building line setbacks, control of access, street naming and numbering, and proposed system of public or other transit lines related to I, I'm glad it says may, because most of those things we're not going to do in the comp plan or in the code. We already have a system for numbering, we don't have transit lines, we don't have, they're also not going to relate to a land use regulation. Um, so, alright, so let's get into the goals. The section was adopted in August of two thousand and two, the latest version, fifty pages long. There's no goals, objectives or policies stated in the text. Specific to each planning area, most public roads are under the jurisdiction of the Idaho Transportation Department of Bonner County Road and Bridge. The county is updating its long-range transportation plan, which, when I wrote that, they were doing it, it's now been done. And that covers all the specific state highway system, does not have a long-range transportation plan, per se. But, yeah, still, the need to consult with ITD on major developments that directly affect the highway is still there. Actual funding and everything else. Building line setbacks, they are embodied in the comp plan now, specifics, five feet, ten feet, all of which have been changed in the zoning code and subdivision code, but not in the comp plan. They don't need to be in the comp plan. This was, I don't know why they put it there. All they got to say is, you need to have setbacks. That's what the comp plan should say.
You're, you're addressing the text of the comp plan, as opposed to, as opposed to the goals and objectives?
Yeah.
Shouldn't we just be, alright, addressing goals?
Page, page down, please. That's it. Now, so let's go to the implementation section. Number thirteen or whatever, not in my document, but you know, back on the-
Chapter two eleven.
Body's all the, uh,
There actually the two point nine.
Yeah. So. There we go. So two point nine. You have comments on that? Yeah. Okay, so. To overall, I don't think any of these goals directly relate to land use code. Bonner County intends to provide a safe transportation system. Good. The goal itself doesn't say, it, it's a laudable goal and all that stuff. So the objective should say, how are you going to get there? Future development shall not adversely impact the existing transportation system by reducing the level of service. Again, unless we have a Centra, Centrak homes coming in here with three thousand lots, every traffic engineer worth his salt is going to say, this development has no impact on the county road.
So can we, Marco? Uncongested.
Again, what does that mean?
Not congested.
Yeah. Okay, what's the standard for congestion? How many cars can be on a road in an hour at a certain point?
Well, normally, you would look at level of service.
Right.
Level one, level two.
No, level A, B, C.
Whatever.
Yeah. I'm a traffic engineer.
That's the way.
I am a traffic engineer.
Okay.
I'm a licensed traffic engineer.
Okay.
Is only two, two, two roads in the county, the levels of service are A, B, C, D, just like grades. Level of service E is, is full. Level of service F is failure, level of service D is failing. We only have two roads and, and a bunch of intersections that are level of service C in this county right now.
So which one would you consider congested?
Edibles near congested, as you stated earlier, the cars.
Congestion is not defined by sporadic events. Congestion is defined by average conditions.
So you're talking about an eight-hour?
Yeah, or, or a peak hour here. Now, again, local code can define that differently, as long as it's defensive.
Peak hour congestion that we're going to be faced with for years to come?
We haven't-
Is that acceptable?
If, 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 and I talked with Roden Bridge about this, when they did the update of the plan, they did some level of review of the potential for congestion, and it didn't find any critical areas.
Isn't it true, though, that level of service varies with hours of the day?
Sure, but peak hour is the norm to look at. Outside of peak hour, let me think about, you know. I used to quit the rush minute in Sanford. Everybody gets off work at four o'clock from four to four to five, it's congested at four oh six, there's no traffic on. Different than Seattle. Seattle has a five-hour peak hour. It's congested, I five is congested for eight to ten hours a day. It creeps. And that's what happens when you get to approaching capacity of the roadway, it becomes a parking lot. Everything slows down just because there's so much traffic. One guy hits his brake pedal up there, the red lights come back, and by the time you get to the fifteenth car, everybody stopped on the road because of reaction time and everything else. Have just a pure function of volume. We don't have that condition in Bonner County. So I, again, uncongested, and people harp on that all the time, because they see it, it's not the way it used to be. I can't back out of my driveway onto the county road without looking anymore. It's congested. My dog can't lay in the middle of the road at two in the afternoon anymore. It's congested. That's what people see. It's very subjective, but we can't, how do you do that in a system? But we can't, how do you do that in a system?
Isn't the goal to make it safe and uncongested and well-maintained?
Safe and well-maintained, yes.
But not uncongested.
I I it's just so hard to achieve and to define. I don't know that it really, I'm sure it's a laudable goal, and someday it may actually come into engineering-wise effect, but for the foreseeable future, a- again, unless we have a three thousand lot subdivision come in or another whatever.
Huge traffic generator.
What's, what is it? What is the peak? What, at what level of service? Our level of service, would you say? Many jurisdictions have said, if it's level of service D, then something should be done, because it's it's beginning to slow down and everything.
For the peak hour.
Yeah, for the peak hour. But, roads and roads don't come in tiny increments, they come in lanes. So if all of a sudden your two-lane road is operating a level service D, the solution is go to a three-lane or a four-lane section. Now, so what requires that? Is it the next guy in? The next guy in trips the wire and oh, now it has to be a four-lane road. He only owns two cars out of the seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty that are already on the road. You can't even calculate a percentage.
I don't, I don't know that we can.
Faces three bucks and, okay, I'm done.
So, so Don, what could we write here that would help mitigate congestion?
So, because what does, so transportation, realistically, what can we do with transportation? If the county through the road plan identified hazard areas, potential hazard areas, then that'd be some substance where you say, well, wait a minute, until that's fixed, it, you really can't add traffic to it, and this is what has been done.
But but every time somebody does a subdivision of whatever size in Bonner County, Roden Bridge gets an opportunity to to voice any concerns.
And they always say. And I've talked with Matt about it. I've talked, I used to talk with Steve Plaid about it all the time. And they're correct, uh, and again, so that, if the, if if the county said, okay, do a traffic study to show what your impact is gonna be. Again, there's so many traffic engineers, and that's what they do, is prove that their client doesn't have impact on the road system.
Does congestion typically come with higher accident rates?
It does. There is a direct connection.
Does Roden Bridge look at accident rates at all?
Yeah, and typical crash in, there's two typical crashes in Bonner County, rear-end crashes where people aren't paying attention, run off the road or curves. And those are speed-related and impaired driving-related. That's, that's the fact that the stats show. What's that got to do with land use regulation?
Well, I was, I'm, I thought popped into my head when you were talking about hazard areas.
Yeah.
So is there a point at which the accident rate reaches a high enough level that you would consider it to be a hazard area? You're not gonna add additional traffic to the road until you resolve it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a connection that can be proved after the fact. It's very hard to to go into a situation, say this is a potential hazard because there's so much traffic on it. Because it does lead to rear-end crashes, approach crashes, where you dart out into traffic to make a smaller gap than you really should, like in Wild Bay.
So.
And most of the congestion is occurring at the interface between the county system and the state highway. Yeah. So, we don't deal with the city.
Look, that's, this is the problem. So I'm gonna go off things. So, county gets a lot of flack because of traffic, and I've made this statement before. Because of the city. So somehow, in the future, hopefully, this next administration, we can get serious with talking to the state, the county, to the cities. Come up with a transportation plan that's gonna work. Picking this can down the roads.
I I I appreciate what you're saying, but having spent time having those conversations, that's some pie and that's pie in the sky stuff. But but let me suggest that that maybe there's some ways at the county that we could tee things up for success, like in this subdivision ordinance, requiring larger easements. So that when those lanes are needed to go from two to three or to four, that the space is there. That is, that is an actionable item that we could do, that we could write in here that would make things better for the future without a lot of long meetings and and useless chit-chat.
So if the goal stays the way it is, to provide safe, uncongested and well-maintained system, alright. Then the objectives are, require additional right-of-way where, when the adjacent county road right-of-way is less than fifty feet. Require intersection spacing, so forth. Just start talking about access controls, start car, some of these, these objectives are pretty good.
Shouldn't that be a policy?
Um.
I think it should be.
How do you get to an uncongested, safe, well-maintained roadway?
Well, no, if we're gonna say, under a certain set of conditions, when you're adjacent to a county road that's less than fifty feet, or whatever all those different conditions are, whatever all those situations are, where we wanna try to plan for the future, as Josh is suggesting. I think it would be a policy that says, these situ, if this, if this situation is what what exists, then the subdivision shall dedicate X amount of feet of road away for future expansion of the roads. And I liked whatever the discussion was about, you know, how we accommodate that so they don't lose. They get a density bonus, or however that works, so that they don't. That's probably fine.
It's just, it's a provision.
I think so, because to me, the policies are what's actionable, right? That's what we're gonna go do.
Well, that's.
And the county standard is what?
For, for what, for right-of-way? Well, it varies.
Roads within the new development, so actually, we just start within the new development.
No, the roads. There's two parts, right?
Josh, I just said, when it, it's forty feet, right? We just did it for private roads, right?
Yeah, but there's, there's some, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. We could raise that up and leave that room there.
I mean, you know, even talking about private roads. Thirty-foot easement, and you're gonna put a twenty-foot road in there, again, with ditches. You're, if you maintain it, if they really do maintain their system, they're going to be tracing on private property to do it. That's the whole issue about easements and rights-of-way, so that the the maintainer does not have to infringe upon that property owner, because they're gonna put a fence up, they're gonna put landscaping up and so forth. And all of a sudden, here comes the road grader, and they're wiping it all out because they can't do it any other way, have to drag that ditch with a blade.
I mean, you're, you're absolutely right.
Right, and you you put those words in there, talk about topographic constraints that would require. The the principle is to capture in an easement or right-of-way with the improvement, so you can maintain the improvement.
If you've got sixty foot, and you were putting in a road, Don's talking about it being tight, but there's some wiggle room in there if you have a rockout cropping to, you know, maneuver around it and still stay in the easement. The act, the area is there. Maybe you can't get to, you can't get to Dawn's superhighway through there, but you could still get a two-lane inside that sixty-foot easement.
Generally, yes, but even then, you you, if you have the luxury to shape the easement to the road that you need to build by.
It would be nice.
Plenty of even de-ded right-of-way, county right-of-way with the road that's built is not in the right of way. Because of that, because they just went from here to here on a bearing of this and so forth, and then they built the road and went, whoa, we had to go around that.
Yeah.
And it went outside, and either the property owner acknowledged it or never complained, so it's okay. County has it by, uh, by prescription, right? So, so anyway, um, the objectives here, as I stated, objectives, future development shall not adversely impact the existing transportation system by reducing the quality of level of service. Again, very subjective, and we're we're hardly creating hazards or congestion. There's some good words, there's some poor words in there. Roads within new developments shall be built according to county standard. Good, um, at the expense of all the roads within developments shall provide adequate access for fire emergency, yes. In the actual fire code, as we talked with the fire departments recently. Uh, future road access shall, shall be developed to integrate with the county and state, state and county system, roads without overburdening. Whatever that means. Again, these are, maybe they're setting stuff up, that code can be there, but at present, our codes, our road standards and codes barely, barely touch these things. Lesser developments to keep transportation costs down, great principle, and it is included in our, our cluster development activity because it has lesser roads. Bonner County intends for certain intense land use developments to provide paved roads. Yeah.
Yeah, can I, can I get a definition on intense?
Yeah.
Well, record a developer to pay the section.
And it, it amounted to the number of lots that we're gonna be.
We've made a lot of mistakes.
Five acre lots in a six hundred forty acre section.
There's some areas, it just, that doesn't make any sense.
I remember us amending that, and that's what we were involved with.
You know, something. The county is required to be paid, but it makes no sense. You know, you know, not only that, it might provide for more, uh, intense runoff.
Well, it it does, but you design that in, you don't, you don't design a road and forget about runoff. And.
So right, if the road's gonna, if the road's gonna be dedicated to the county. Then it's to the county's, it's to the county's benefit, okay, versus rebuilding that road through winter time, through springtime, after fall.
So you're talking about dedicated for and accepted for, for maintenance. Yeah, which, there hasn't been one for decades.
We should.
Should, you know.
Are you talking about in a new development if they're gonna dedicate it to the county?
What about, what about where you, where the development has a public road that is privately maintained?
Then it's up to them.
That shouldn't have to be paid if they don't want to pay.
No.
No.
If you're gonna, if it's gonna be turned over to the taxpayer.
So all that stuff that we did out there.
We just say, Bonner County intends, Bonner County will require, and should require, uh, any public roads that are publicly maintained.
Or.
New, new public.
Yeah.
Well, but, but like you said, I think, places that applies and the places that wouldn't make any sense.
About, if it's gonna be a.
You gotta go down a mile and a half of gravel road to hit a quarter mile of pavement.
I know. That's, that's exactly.
Well. Long-term, that county stands for building roads. And in wear and tear on machinery and other roads hauling there, it's really to the taxpayers' benefit long-term.
Except for the, where we, where we live, there's no paved roads. Except for the main, except for fifty-seven, heading up. And Reader Mae Road. Other than that, no paved roads. So why would you make a developer who's coming in pave a section of road when there's literally no other paved roads? The county's never gonna take that out. And in terms of maintenance, they don't maintain our roads up there at all, so. You know, and like, there's no puddles and paved roads. I don't know, I I need to go back and find out where we amended this. I I know we wrote four amendments to this several years ago.
Two things. I've seen the study that proves that paving roads is cheaper for the taxpayers, that's for sure.
It's cheaper.
It's cheaper for the taxpayers to pave it.
After a certain, with a certain ADT.
Yes.
Now the standard, four hundred, four hundred or more cars a day on the road, the county road bridge will start to look at it to see if it warrants paving.
Right.
But the second. But I think there has to be some, some kind of verbiage in there that, that doesn't have, you know, if there's banjo music out there, then we probably shouldn't have to pave the road.
Right.
What's wrong with banjos?
Not a thing. We could write that.
What's the payback on paving the road, though? In terms of the maintenance. How many years of maintenance savings are required to pay for the pavement?
It's all part of the formula. When you hit that four hundred ADT, then they look at, what's the payoff? What, what's it gonna cost?
Well, give me an idea, I mean, is it fifty years or five years or?
It's, it's zero, because they're requiring the developer to do it.
That's what they are.
So, alright, so this is the other part of it. And I, I don't know which set of commissioners, but some sets ago, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty years ago, they said, it isn't worth it for us to have a developer do it even to proper standard, because we can't afford to maintain it. We can't afford to take on any more pavement roads. So then it comes, okay, flip it around, then why are we having?
Because they have to pay somebody to do that, and they don't do it themselves? Is that the deal?
Yeah.
They're not set up to pave, with paving equipment.
Right, they, they do their own work.
They can do gravel all day long.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's been proven out so many times, uh, in the past, in various areas, whether city or county. Subdivision goes in, curving out of sidewalk roads, twenty years later, they need to be replaced, not just repaired. There's no way that that can be, nobody put in a sinking fund when they built the road to say, okay, twenty years, it's gonna be money to do it. It's gotta come out of the budget. So all of a sudden, your, your expenditure, your number of roads and your pavement cycle and everything else, it's just crowding you out, and whoa, you can't do it. So this county just said, no, we're not taking any more roads for maintenance. Period. And it hasn't been accepted that I know of. Maybe that stuff out in Blanchard, maybe that was, who knows?
But, but that's the case.
Then why we have this in here?
Why are we having it in here? But, but really, what you just said is applicable to the public road privately maintained. If you got six houses on a little road that the county required to be paid, now those six homeowners are gonna have to do the same thing the county did.
Absolutely.
Well, that shouldn't be, that's not fair.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, I, is that system out there at Quail, uh, Quail Ridge or whatever, is that publicly maintained? Or is that? Especially like through the department lands.
I remember that they were required.
Yeah, and it was because of the number. It was because to get the permanent width, because fire district was all over it, this thing was gonna result to a single-track road, a two-track road over time. So pave it, then I'll maintain it as two-lane road, so, oh, we can get in and out on emergencies. And the number of lots, I mean, six hundred forty acres divided by five, that's how many lots are gonna be out there. So, huge, that's, that's one of the biggest subdivisions. Well, whatever that comes to, hundred and, hundred and twenty units. Hundred and twenty potential lots in that section. Wow, that's one of our bigger subdivisions in the county.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, paving, and it's a closed system, there's no way out. After that department land road out to, and spirit like that one. That would seem to me, a hundred and twenty units would seem to be a tense scenario. Yeah, six houses.
Hundred and twenty? Those are, those are rookie numbers. Don's over here talking about three thousand, one twenty.
Got that Centrac Homes proposal, and that was for three thousand homes. No. Canyon County, next to, next to Boise, it's the bedroom community of Boise, and it's being built.
So, Alan, you talked about maintenance, the county put over this.
Why don't we take this out?
I, I concur.
I, I have, I mean, I think, first of all, it's vague, so I I don't think we'd miss it, unless we came up with a way to make it a lot more specific. And, um, so I'm okay with taking it out. As it certainly has its written. I don't know what intense land use is.
In its place, or I think part of the intent of that, was to get, even as private roads, a good system to provide for the, the people coming in and buying lots. Because that is something, you've gone on the first floor in Public Works and answer that phone from September to April. My road's falling apart. Get out here and fix it. It's a private road. Well, so what? Nobody, bit of, bit of, bit of, you know, on and on and on. Every day, hundreds of calls, maybe not hundreds, but many calls every single day, because the roads are falling apart. Because there was no requirement to set it up to a certain standard and maintain it that way. Is that a good public practice to require some standard for these private roads, whether they're in an MLD or a six lot subdivision or a big flat? It seems like it. But that's, that brings up the old question, how far does local government go to protect the land?
When you say private roads, you mean private, privately maintained?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's very.
But that's.
And if somebody calls, because I mean, I live on a public road privately maintained. If somebody on my road calls the county, that's just stupid. You can't hear stupid by putting it in these policies.
But.
You're making the wrong phone call.
But it's still, you know, the vast majority of people coming into this county see their lot in August. They say, come here in the summer, and they love it. They go talk with somebody, they talk to Matt's office, and they go out there and look at it. Wonderful in August. September, it's a mud bar. They don't see it in September. They bought it in August.
Is it a privately maintained road?
Yeah.
It's not the county's problem. I don't even see why we should be talking about it. Just because Roden Bridge is getting some misdirected phone calls?
Well, they're not, who else would they call?
Well, I understand, but.
Their realtor?
Yeah, yeah. Those realtors, not the realtors, but the realtors.
I just don't think we should be writing policies so that.
I said, you're a realtor. It's the realtors, not the realtors. It's the realtors that get those. Okay, how about bikeways and pedestrian paths? Don't be included in development plan. That's, that's the one, it's the same sentence that was in the school thing. Sure. I mean, yes, it's a lot of a goal. And that might be something that'd be imposed as a link. Yeah, it's the same issue of, what does that mean? In development plans? And integrated. Included in development plans.
How, how large a development?
It doesn't say. But why not? The intent there. Oh, boy, that's, that's. That's pretty big. Yeah. Let's just make it more big.
Well, if it has.
And this wasn't even, not necessarily including that. This was saying between lots, over to a trail. One, one issue that we've seen over and over again. We end up having a new community go in and have an interior road system that may have some pathway system. But out to the main road, it's just that one single access. Quarter mile long or half mile long along the road, and there's no access from interior flat out to the road for pedestrians. They gotta walk all the way down to the entrance and then go up the road. Why isn't there some pathway requirement to get out to the county road? Look what happened out here on Highway two with Westwood and the others. People are constantly crawling down through the active ditch to get over to the bike path. There's no provision for those side streets to get access to bike path. So they each individually went in and funded a culvert and fill and pavement to get over the bike path and crosswalks. County would, the city wouldn't do it, the state wouldn't do it. They all had to do it themselves. What are we doing? We're encouraging to use bikes and pedestrians. We're not making a provision for it. So who should, who should have, who should have been required to do that? That, that should have been considered when the state took over the old right of way for the road. Should have been. The state should have been a state.
Oversight.
It was talked about, but oh, no, that would get it. Rumbled, rumbled, rumbled by the district engineer.
Hold, hold pine down here. Falls down and they'll take care of it.
About to get on. So it says included in development plans. Who's development plans? I mean, who? Land, no, we're talking land use. It's intuitive that that means you come in to propose a development. That's the subject, isn't it? I don't know.
At what scale? At what scale? Yeah.
We're talking scale. Okay, let's talk scale. Intense land use.
Which we still need a definition for.
Took that out.
Anything, anything more intensive of MLD, it needs to be considered.
Bays and pedestrian.
It should say.
Be considered if it's.
It says shall be included. We, we need.
Not shall be, but should be.
Passing thought.
Intense for certain land uses. Shall be considered. So let's say shall be considered, not included. At least that sets it up. Because that's what we're doing is we're setting it up so that land use code can, can take the next step and decide whether it's included or required or. I can live with considering. And shall be considered in development plans. I think that reads okay. All right. So I think that's the end of the, end of the section for transportation.
These guys go on drive home.
We've only got agriculture and recreation.
Housing.
Mine, the two of us.
Oh, yeah. Hazardous areas.
Yep.
Okay. Progress?
Did you just get here? All you had to do.
There is. Oh, shoot. I started wondering if that was the bottom of the section. I thought it was because of the double line.
One more page.
Okay, quickly.
County should review, oh, this is the policies. Okay, that's fine. County should review opportunities to offset the impacts to current uses from future uses of transportation system. What? I don't even know what that means. Well, true, but I, yeah, that was a hero. Let's just, let's put a, yeah, double, put a strike through on that one.
Well, I, I know what it means.
What does it mean?
It means you do a big development that is gonna drive invest, needed investment in the transportation system in order to mitigate congestion if it was gonna happen. Then the current taxpayers shouldn't pay that bill. The developers should pay that bill. That's what it means. Whether we wanna do that or not is a different question, but that's what it means.
Could be turned around and say, development should, should pay its own way.
Yeah.
It's like they added the, the turn pocket for you.
Right. Well, yeah, and all the way on Highway two, every turn pocket out there was done by the developer. I didn't do harm in leaving it, but.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, let's maybe remove the strikeout and.
I think it, I think it follows from one of the objectives. The calls are objectives.
It should. Okay, so those service county systems should be developed in thresholds and states. So this is that other end. Develop your own standards. Develop county standards for acceptable level of service.
So this should we say acceptable levels of service for the county should be developed? Rather than just levels of service. I don't know what, again.
It's implied, but it wouldn't hurt to say that. How about reasonable levels of service? And, and what some jurisdictions have done, you know, they, they recognize the, the national standards that the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials adopted. But they say for our jurisdiction, with our conditions, here are local levels of service. And they quantify it and they try to stand behind it. And those become local law. Fine. What's wrong with that? So we could work with that. The need for future road extensions, okay. Our new transportation corridors should be examined. That's in that section for the analysis. It talks about just that. It talks about maintaining a map of, and there's another code section that is titled a future acquisitions map. And that's referenced in the land use planning. Where it says, here's our county, here's where we intend to have roads through our county. That was put on the books in nineteen eighty five. Not a single jurisdiction has dared put out a map like that. It has such implications because it's, it's adverse condemnation. What? You're gonna put a road right there? That's my property. How come you haven't talked to me yet? When are you gonna come and buy it? You're saying it's there. Oof. So nobody's dared to do it. Could be, could be metropolitan planning organization attempted to do it, but they had to go through the county and the county. That's that one. I, it's a, it's a laudable goal and everything, but it doesn't, it's, it doesn't work. Now, future acquisition map. That came right out of state code.
So we, you, so we, Warner County have one?
No.
Okay. Here's the amount of money.
The, yeah, it's coming. The principle behind it. First part, the first part is the, the needs for future road extensions. That's, I think, still needs to be in the code. So that when somebody subdivides a property and there's an adjacent property that's undeveloped, but it's logical that the road should come through this one into that one. That, that gets analyzed. And if it's, if it's the only way into that of the property, at least make provision for that. So a, a sixty foot space between two adjacent lots that they don't have to build it, but it has to be reserved for.
So, but you could, you could, you could address that issue with a much more narrowly tailored policy.
Right.
You could say, you know, something of, you know, land use, I'm sorry, land divisions, where, wherever possible, should not create inaccessible locks or whatever. Yeah.
How they gonna, they gotta build.
The word was, what was their, you and I had.
Continuity.
Continuity.
Continuity of system. Yeah, and that's, that's talked about in a couple.
Flowery language.
Why don't you just end this after examine? Yeah, okay, get rid of the future acquisition.
I think it needs to be more specific.
So Swatty, after, yeah, put a period after examine. And scratch, put a strikeout through the rest of the sentence, if you would. The one that starts out the needs for future roads. Yep. And period there. And strike out the rest. So development in areas that are not served by county standard roads or where transportation is inadequate should be discouraged. Oh, amen. Put that in the code. How you? I just, I walked away from this and I don't see hardly any land use code coming from any of this. But can that be, that end up being a? I get it.
Look at the difference on the designation. There's some that are built specifically around higher density on, on county.
Yeah.
So that's what I would say is that you look at suburban, you're not gonna put that in the middle of the forest where there's no county roads. But I think the development.
Developments in areas that are not served by county standard roads should be discouraged.
Right. So you're discouraging it by not allowing higher density.
Okay. So it's a, again, that's a direction.
I, I, I understand completely what you're saying. I'm not sure in ten, in five years, some different group of people looking at that statement would interpret it that way. So I think if that's, if that's what we mean. If that's what we mean, we should figure out a better way to say that that's what we're trying to get.
Would that language right there, would that be for a neighborhood group coming in, going against somebody's rezon request to say?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
See.
A lot of the argument.
I would say.
Because there's a county road.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way it's written. The way it's written.
Whatever it is, right?
Yeah. Okay, well. Yeah, that, that's.
Certainly impacts on.
All right, so leave that one. A mechanism for ensuring the maintenance of private road systems should be developed and imposed on new development to reduce the likelihood of roads becoming burdened. But. Laudable goal, but yikes.
But here's how, how, here's how I've done it in the past is you, with that development, you require a shared road agreement. So that there is, there's clear rules spelled out that say how this maintenance is gonna happen and how you're gonna participate.
Should that be a requirement? Or would you put in a road that's privately maintained?
I think something like that that says, here's a mechanism to ensure that is better than this general statement of.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
You're gonna.
What do you think the county code is? I mean, it's.
Well, county government, that's different.
If, if we're gonna do that at a minimum, it should specify, you're talking about new private road systems, not existing.
Roads becoming. What if somebody divides a lot that's served by an existing private road?
Where they're at a piece of property and they wanna do something to do with conservation easements.
Oh, yeah, and we had them, guy way up at the end of a privately maintained road. He's got forty acres. Now it's gonna be fives out of it. And downhill, they say, whoa, wait a minute, we can't stand that. We're all responsible for this and we're not gonna put up with it. Yikes, yeah. And we've got miles of roads like that in this county. I mean, this is miles.
Oh, yeah.
We're not gonna solve that.
I'm very familiar. I live on one.
So, but, but I mean, that's.
You guys paved it.
I didn't pave it. There's a whole story there too.
Oh, yeah. It's paved. Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Now it's paved.
Don, I've seen the exact opposite where, hey, here's sixteen fives. Let's go back to this road association and say, hey, we'd like to add these to that. And they said, heck, no, we, we don't want the, these additional votes that would let us lose control. And they were willing to
put up with.
Take the traffic just because they didn't wanna lose control of the vote. So I, I think it can go both ways.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't know. I mean, that's a, again, that's a lot of old gold, but it's, I, I just can't see the county imposing that on a development.
Yeah, well, I just, I'm just. But it's not an HOA. It's just specific to road maintenance only.
Yeah, or even a maintenance area. They're gonna require. Only, but I don't.
Yeah, but, but I mean, we've done CCNRs and, you know, shared road agreement. They say very different things. It's, we're just talking about specific to a road.
Right now, I mean, is there, is, is there any allowance?
Maybe there's someone in county that can make a phone call or they can call another county and say, hey, what do you have with your policy?
But I, I don't remember one where the county code allows the imposition of a road maintenance agreement for that. Unless if, the only way I could think of is under encroachment permit where you, with two owners, you have a maintenance agreement for that single approach. But that's just, just for that. It's not for a whole road system. I, I don't know.
It just says a mechanism for ensuring maintenance of private roads. Okay. My familiar, what I'm familiar with is a shared road agreement.
Which is the same thing as a shared driveway. So what happens when, when that road is? But did the county, did the county impose that?
No, we, no, because it was the right thing to do. We did it.
Yeah. So again, we're talking about land use code.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
This is an agreement. Yeah, the parcel owners.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so the last one. Bike and pedestrian trails need to be included in developer proposals to connect the communities with existing. So there's the, the recitation of the one that was in the school thing. Actually, the same word. It should, it should have been the same, but that's the reason why, just so that it starts to make a system of pathways and so forth. How do you start it? You start out with one, then the next guy has to connect to that, which is a rub.
Let me try to put a sentence together here. I'm, I'm thinking you don't even know where the trail system is and you're gonna require them to connect to it?
Yeah. This whole thing came out of an effort that pretty much the county staff started in two thousand thirteen or fourteen to come up with a trail plan. So if you go on the website now, you'll see the draft trails plan.
Right.
And this was, this was, this ended up in the code at that time to push that forward because it looked like that was gonna be part of the comp plan, but it never made it.
So as we.
So it shouldn't be taken out?
Again, it's a, it's a long-term laudable goal, but without system definition.
Fly in the sky.
What do you do? End up with little systems or just a thing that was built that goes nowhere.
Yeah.
Serves only interior to the subdivision. I don't know. I mean, it's a, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hard one for some of the public to swallow to take that out for sure. If you think it's a golden. If you think it's a golden key or something.
Are those landowners that are gonna be?
Yeah, they're landowners, they may not be actually involved in a, a subdivision that has a, a potential to have a pathway. They're bike users, they're bikes and pets, Monday hikers and bikers.
Yes, my experience has been that's, the ones wanting to complain and are not the ones that are giving up the, giving up the land.
Right.
Yeah, and, and quote, giving up the land.
I meant it with all due respect, of course.
I, I, my travels around the country and visiting family members who live in unincorporated county areas, like Boulder County, Colorado. It is a requirement there to have a walkway system, they have the most fantastic bike and walking system I've ever seen. And, and it's, it's giving up the land, it's a selling point in all those.
Sandpoint will never be bolder, and nobody here wants it to be bolder.
We're not talking Sandpoint.
I, well, Bonner County will never be bolder, Bonner County will never be bolder.
Yeah, just, here's as an example.
Please bless and double thanks.
Um, take an Idaho example. There's, there's other places in Idaho that have done it, right now.
Urban areas.
Uh, no. If you wanna call Driggs Idaho urban and the county around Driggs, they are, they have a very extensive walkway system. It's mainly old railroad beds, granted, but, and they thrive on it down. And it's a big economic driver in that county.
And it's a city, right?
No, it goes all the way into the ski area, north of Driggs. Driggs is about this big in that county, and it goes all the way through the county, goes up to the ski area, so way up in the boonies.
If we, if we're looking at Bonner County and we're talking about this, then I, it, it gets difficult because there's limiting factors like topography and bodies of water and, and all sorts of things. And so I think if it's specific to a development, let's put a trail around a development. Okay, but this idea that we're gonna connect parcels all over the county, that's, that's a little lofty.
Yeah. Why don't we just say should be considered rather than need to be included? Yeah, that was strong language. To start the whole process. There's definitely areas where it could be achieved, and I, I believe there's areas where the people would love to have it achieved because it isn't there now and they can't do anything about it. But to be able to walk, um, you know, what's happening now up at Pine Street Woods, which is on the fringe of Sandpoint and into Dover, but this county area up there, too. Now, they've got that conservancy have gone through, and they've got permission from adjacent landowners to put trails through there. And up at Schweitzer, all the property down to the city's watershed, those landowners up there have agreed to have trails going across.
Yeah, so you've got, you know, private citizens that want that, and so they're doing it, that's great, but do we need that here?
Yeah.
And developers.
Sometimes include it because it's a, it's an attractive amenity.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, it's a, again, the whole effort started in thirteen or so with a trails committee and trails, uh, component, subcomponent of the transportation element, and that's where that came. I think need to be included. Yeah, it's, it's, that was intended to be that strong, but not without the rest of it coming along. Oh, to be considered, should be considered, and what that means, while we look at it, no. That's what I T D does, because the federal requirement is you will consider pedestrian facilities on every major project that the federal government funds. Yeah, we looked at it, we're not gonna do it.
And, and when it says to connect with it's moving with existing and planned by.
Bringing a trail with them as they come. That was mine, that was mine. I got that in the program.
So they are, the state is good.
Bring a trail this way, if somebody pushes it hard enough, yes.
On, on ninety-five?
Yeah.
As part of the widening project?
Yeah. All the way from.
From Corde Lane to.
I ninety, I ninety to Sable. Hopefully, they'll connect to the bridge that come into town. So Sandpoint to Corde Lane will have a trail.
And it was starting along or did Corde Lane, because it gets better gas mileage.
Might have to put her bigger gas.
Stay on state, stay on state. Yeah.
They're all there.
Part of the, part of the US ninety-five improvement car with the Sable.
And wrapped in Haven, whatever it is.
I hope.
Haven, it's into.
So it's Bonner County now.
So is that the last one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Swatty, shut her down.
All right, so it's meeting is continued to downstairs, um, twenty-first, it's eight forty-six. Just mean, there's.
I get nowhere, Steph. If you guys can maybe put something on the website. Right. Projects so far. If it's possible to to, to give the general address for the.